Welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to the order for the September 11th, 2018 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Muldoon is currently absent.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I had one.
You?
I'd asked Dave Webb to show a little bit more on the, on item number seven, which involves the amendment number two to the Maintenance and Repair Services Agreement with Park West. The staff report had shown a fairly large increase and it appeared to be a fairly large increase with what also appeared to be a large scope increase. I'd asked Mr. Webb some information about it, and I'd like him to just share just a little bit of what he had, what he had shown when, when I'd asked him that.
All right. Looking around, I don't see another people needing answers, so I'll move along to our first.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the answer to my question.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I apologize. Thank you, Councilmember O'Neil. Good question, and I'm going to explain real quick about item seven. This is adding the second year of its two-year increase to the original base contract. It has to do with our Parkway and median landscaping with Park West. So on the screen you'll see a little table, and you'll see the first three years, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. That was the original contract at a base level of 101.5 million roughly a year, and then we added some supplemental on that. So it averages out about 1.8 million a year for a total three-year contract of roughly 1.499. You see the numbers there. The not-to-exceed amount for that contract was 5.5 million dollars. So the first-year amendment we did in 2017 is that line below it, and that comprises up basically the 108, oh, I'm sorry, 1,833,000 dollars with a CPI adjustment for three years, bringing it up to that far number on the screen there, the 1.974 million. And then staff back then added a little additional money to cover more irrigation issues, plant die-outs, any kind of driveway run-throughs on our planners for added maintenance. So it brought the total up to, for this year seventeen, about 2 million plus, 37,000 dollars. So this year what we're asking for is to do that again, have the next year amendment to that. And that brings us up to a CPI adjustment on the original contract at 2 million dollars. We're going to ask this year, and I didn't explain this, I apologize, in the council member, we're going to add 158,000 dollars to that to add tree planting to our operations. One of our areas we're trying to improve on is planting more trees, replacement trees. So this is one way we can get Park West to add some tree planting, which is about 140 trees this money will pay for. So our total amendment again is 2.2 million. And the number referred to in the report that Councilmember O'Neil pointed out to me is you'll notice the 687,000 dollars. That was probably an oversight by staff. What we like to do is try to, and past councils asked us, what is the difference between the original contract and where we are today? So if you take the original contract, the base value of 1.560, and you subtract that from what we're asking for, that's where the 687,000 dollars came from. So we're not really adding that much to the contract. That's the differential between the base and the amendment today. What we're asking for in addition from last year's contract is 158,000 dollars to plant 140 trees roughly where we have replacement needs.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah, I just wanted the rest of the council to hear the explanation because it made me feel frankly much better than seeing an increase of 687. So, thanks.
Thank you for bringing that up. All right, now we'll move along to the Library Services Director as a presentation from Tim Heatherton. Lawyer?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the council. At this time, I'd like to introduce Kathy, Kathy, excuse me, Verroyer, who's the president of the Library Foundation, who would like to present the city with a large check.
Good afternoon. My name's Kathy Verroyer. I'm the chair of the Board of Directors for the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation. And the foundation staff and the board are very excited about our upcoming year. Programs such as the Witty Lecture Series and Library Live have finalized their speakers. Itcher Estate and Money, we have fifteen or sixteen programs scheduled for the spring and fall. Yesterday was our first workshop, and we had about 145 neighbors in the community that came and participated. And best of all, a lot of these programs are free. Last year, we had about 7,200 members in our community attend the foundation-sponsored programs, many of which were sold out. Twenty eighteen, nineteen, our fiscal year, is going to be another spectacular year. But not only does the foundation sponsor programs, but it also provides funds for the library, and these funds are used to enhance our library. Therefore, on behalf of the foundation, it's with really great pride and enthusiasm to present the library with a check for 153,125. These monies come from the generous donation made by our members, 1,400 strong. The foundation is very proud to be a partner of the library, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, 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 may I just say something while you're walking down there? Tim, as long as I've been sitting here for the last almost four years, I've been receiving, we've been receiving at least four years of checks, and it's gone on for many years. Do you know off the top of your head, the last four years, if they've all been the average of that amount? It's been over, well over north of a half a million dollars, if not more?
Generally between 180 and 120, I think.
So maybe it's closer to, closer to a million dollars. Well, I just want to congratulate our generous donors to the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation. Thank you very much. That means a lot to all the residents of Newport Beach. Thank you.
All right. We now have a report from our Traffic Signal System Technology Update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. This is an interesting topic, and council had some requests to bring this back, back in late spring. So Brad Summers, our Principal Traffic Technician Engineer, is with us tonight, and he's going to give you an update. It's a good time because we just finished summer, and we've been doing some tweaks and upgrades to the system, so we'll have some new and fresh data for you. Brad?
Yeah, thank you, Dave. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, I'm Brad Summers, Principal Civil Engineer within the Public Works Department. This afternoon, I'm going to go ahead and talk about technology, both, that's in our system currently, as well as what we've been deploying recently, and maybe where we're going to be going in the future. This is a bit of a follow-up presentation to a study session in October where we talked about the traffic signal system, really in depth. We talked about the components, the nuts and bolts, how we operate it, maintain it. And we also talked about three items of kind of leading-edge technology that we'd be moving into or deploying, which we have done and we can talk about tonight. First and foremost, the city does have an advanced traffic signal system that really is modern and leading-edge, and this is what we have here today. The main components of it are Traffic Management Center here at Civic Center. This is where we're able to monitor the system centrally. We get real-time information. We can make changes in real-time. It allows us quick response and good incident management, again, from here at City Hall. And then we also have our field components. This is going to be at every signalized intersections. We've enhanced the field equipment out there, again, the traffic signal control equipment at those locations, which increases our reliability and allows us a platform for expanding in the future. Our fiber-optic communication network was developed as part of that traffic signal modernization program over a series of several projects and years. And this is, allows us for a dedicated and secure fiber-optic communication system that's underneath pretty much all of our roadways at this point, connecting all of our 123 traffic signals, as well as some key facilities that are along those corridors. Working with the IT department, we're moving forward, and we're looking to bring more IT and city facilities onboard with this traffic signal network, and essentially giving that a platform for growth as well. So why add more technology and integrate it into our system? Simply speaking, we have a great system now, but we are seeing more users, we're seeing more cars, bicyclists, and pedestrians, and areas such as Cronin Del Mar, the village shown here, we really don't have much more room to widen or do bigger projects. So we look for additional efficiencies, and one way of doing that, of course, is bringing new technology into our system. The goals, of course, are to improve traffic flow by reducing delay for the motorists, which of course reduces frustrations for the travelers, reduce greenhouse gases, we increase the reliability of the system, that's a reduction in cost posts for the city and our roadway users themselves, and of course, again, to prepare for the future. Now, switching gears, we talked about three items in that October study session we'd be deploying that were relatively leading-edge at the time. One of them was a Bluetooth traffic monitoring system. At that time, staff had identified the need to bring in better information or get more data related to how traffic flows within the city, what times, where the peak hours are, as well as what those trends are, and again, how traffic flows. So with that, in the winter of 2018, we deployed the Bluetooth monitoring system. We put it on the peninsula, Cronin Del Mar, Newport Coast, as well as on MacArthur Boulevard and Coast Highway. And then we're able to share information with the system with Caltrans, as well as the city of Irvine in the near future. Looking and seeing what we've been able to gather from that deployment, we've been getting some good travel time data, definitely with peak period information. We're getting congestion alerts. The system's actually able to send us alerts now when we reach certain thresholds, and of course, real-time monitoring. Now, these three top items are something we've really employed over the summer, say on the peninsula area. Obviously, the peninsula doesn't hold traditional AM and PM-type commuting peaks more in the summer period, so this has given us a very in-depth look at how traffic is moving on the peninsula, and given us the ability to adjust our roadway network and system as we see those peaks come up. Another interesting bit of data we're getting from the system is what we're calling traffic trends, but this is actually something we looked at in Cronin Del Mar. We're now able to get data and consider when congestion is picking up to the point where we may be seeing some motorists detour around Cronin Del Mar instead of following Coast Highway, they may be using Newport Coast. Looking forward, we're going to be using the software to continue to fine-tune our traffic signal coordination, as well as our roadway networks. We can use it to monitor construction, as well as incident management, even look into when construction happens, when roadway closures may be appropriate, and then review the effectiveness, excuse me, of implemented changes. Another one of our newer technologies that we put out is actually related to an advanced traffic signal control strategy, basically advanced traffic signal timing for the Newport Boulevard corridor, essentially the gateway to the Balboa Peninsula and the beach areas. We did what we called responsive traffic control. Now, in this situation, it's essentially the first step of our traffic signal becoming automated and choosing traffic signal timing plans on its own. In a responsive environment, the traffic signal system selects from pretty much a predetermined menu of timing plans staff has developed, and it's able to implement them depending on the demand at that time and what's going on in that corridor. Now, this system was incorporated through a Measure M2 grant that was funded in fall of 2017. We installed it, again, on Newport Boulevard between 21st Street and Vialito, and with that, we did see some improvements. And the interesting thing about this software, and what it did for us, is it didn't necessarily help the peak of the peak periods, but what we see now is the system's able to ramp up and ramp down, or adjust timing as the flow of traffic increases or decreases. And the benefit there, in what we call the shoulder periods, is we're seeing more movement off the side streets and better timing for the pedestrians that may be crossing those streets. So...
I'm at that intersection multiple times a week. So I have noticed on my own experience, I've seen it change, but could you explain to me, is that software-driven entirely, or is there still manual decision-making that takes place here in the traffic control room?
Yes, it is, as I said, kind of the first step. So we're allowing the traffic signal system to take in all the data it's receiving from the field, from the vehicle detection, the pedestrian detection, and other inputs, but it's using traffic signal timing plans that we've developed in the back room. We're also monitoring it and making sure it's selecting the right plans. And then from there, once we reach the peak of the peak, say, you know, a busy Saturday summer afternoon, we're going to be looking at it, and we may be choosing a different timing plan. It may actually just overwhelm the controller's ability at that point.
Is somebody manning the traffic control room on weekends?
Actually, to that note, we don't normally man it on the weekends. We do remote removals, and as Brad mentioned, the software now is telling us there are issues. So the Bluetooth and others will say we have congestion, and then Brad or some of his staff may monitor, go online. And then through our camera system, we can look, where is that congestion? And with that, maybe they can open the signal, open the green time up and give more, say. It just got cloudy on the peninsula all of a sudden at three, and everybody wants to leave, and we start seeing the reds come up. We can open the signals up and flush it out. That has to be done manually right now. I think what Brad's alluding to is, we're getting to the point where it's starting to look at signal plans and saying, hey, this cloudy thing happened, all this traffic's coming. Maybe we switch to a different plan. I think you can allude to that one.
That's good. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's correct. In, say, last summer, even the beginning of this summer, we would have, a staff member would, on the weekends or holidays, have the ability to access the system remotely. They would start looking at the system about 9:00 a.m., and we'd start looking for congestion points in the usual places. And again, now with the Bluetooth monitoring sending us alerts, as well as this system running, now it's telling us when we're starting to see issues. And of course, this summer's been one of fine-tuning the system where we've been checking in and just monitoring it as well. That is, of course, one of the benefits of the system, and I think at this point, a recommendation is to continue the responsive operation out there and continue to fine-tune that. The next traffic signal strategy that we deployed is actually, I say leading-edge, maybe more of a bleeding-edge sort of technology, but it's what we call adaptive. This is the next step in traffic signal timing. In an adaptive environment, the traffic signal controller is now able to create its own timing plans utilizing thresholds that city staff gives it. We installed this on MacArthur Boulevard as a demonstration project between Coast Highway and Bison, essentially at the 73 entrance, and that was in December 2017. And a special note about this is the, we received the software that we were required to implement into our system for both our central system, as well as the field locations as a trial basis from our vendor. In observations, initially, when we turned the system on, we had, we saw good benefits on MacArthur, and that was actually realized through longer green times, as well as better flow of traffic. So it was something that the traveling public was noting as well. Unfortunately, we started seeing impacts to the side street movements. And with that, going through more iterations of the process, we spent quite a bit of staff time fine-tuning this to the point where we are now, where it's running smoothly. Unfortunately, the benefit on MacArthur has diminished to the point where we feel it's operating about as well as it was prior to implementing the adaptive system. At this point, we're actually recommending ending the demonstration project, but then using the lessons learned, as well as all the timing data that we've received, to implement a responsive system, which again, is what we're running and have had success on Newport Boulevard on the peninsula. Now, I'm not counting out adaptive completely yet. I think it's going to continue to evolve, and maybe in another location, and potentially another type of deployment, it may be something we could look at in the future. And even our neighbors in North and Irvine are getting ready to deploy an adaptive system, so we're going to be working with them closely to see what success they have. Looking to the future, I think recent, in recent times, we're going to be seeing more increased motorists and roadway information. I'm thinking more in the congested areas, say, the peninsula, potentially leading up to Cronin Del Mar or entrance points of the city. We could be looking at more of a miniature or correct-size freeway sign with displays that we can manage from our Traffic Management Center on that. And then going beyond that, the big discussion points, of course, are connected vehicles and connected users, as well as autonomous vehicles, all leaving to self-driving cars, which is, it's coming, and it's coming quickly. So preparing for that, again, our signal system is advanced, and we actually have a great foundation for new technologies as they arrive. We feel we're going to continue to invest in the signal system. We feel that's important, of course, to welcome that new technology in when it's appropriate for our community. We'll continue to monitor and be active in legislation, be part of the discussion, to make sure that what comes about is something that would serve a community like Newport Beach. Our staff is proficient in traffic signals and timing, but we're going to continue to be educated to make sure that when that technology comes out, we're aware of it and we know how to integrate it into our system. We want to be aware of leading versus bleeding-edge as we talk more about autonomous vehicles. It appears there's going to be several iterations of technology that comes out. We want to make sure that we enter into that at the correct time to be sustainable. And then, of course, maintain the current system. It's a priority of Public Works to make sure our system's operating correctly. We've seen simple things such as malfunctioning vehicle detectors or pedestrian push buttons wipe out good signal timing plans, so we want to be on top of that. Looking at some ongoing, upcoming projects that I think are pertinent to the topic, we have an ongoing project on Coast Highway. It's a signal synchronization project that's a cooperative between the city, the state is Caltrans, as well as Orange County Transportation Authority. It is a grant, a Measure M2-funded project, which we're adding more fiber-optic communication cable, updating traffic signal control equipment, as well as updating the traffic signal coordination and timing along Coast Highway for the entire length within the city of Newport Beach. It's actually 27 intersections. The city of Irvine has asked us to go in on another traffic signal synchronization grant with them, actually two. One that's already been awarded in the competitive process to them, which will be on Culver Drive, which is Benita Canyon and Ford Road within the city of Newport Beach, and then an upcoming one from MacArthur Boulevard. These will both be a Measure M2-funded through OCTA, and there are a couple items that we'll be bringing back to council for approval in the near future. We'll continue to upgrade our fiber-optic communication network and expand it through some smaller-level projects that we're looking at within the next couple of years. And then we have an annual traffic signal rehabilitation project, which is currently redoing the signal at Irvine and West Cliff. And then we're going to be looking at two center, excuse me, intersections on University Drive, both at Jamboree and La Vida. And with that, I think we're there.
Great. Thank you for that. I'll bring it back to the council here. Mayor Protim O'Neil.
Sure, real quick. Last week, Dave Webb and I actually attended the regional conference for OCTA for the Supervisor Steels region, and one of the things they spent quite a bit of time talking about was signal synchronization across the, across the area, and the amount of work that OCTA has put in to ensure that's happening. And I know, given how many times it's shown up in our council packets, how much you work with our surrounding cities, OCTA, and then competing for the grant funding, so just want to applaud you for that. I know how difficult that one, that is, and how labor-intensive it is, but we see the, we see the progress. And then the other thing I was going to ask is, when we're talking about autonomous vehicles and seeing that coming through, and cities are starting to permit them in, you know, Phoenix is going through a massive pilot program right now, does that require, how much, what kind of infrastructure are these cities needing to put in to accomplish that? And are the companies kind of coming in and helping out to make sure that their cars actually work inside of the cities where they're testing them out?
Yes, quite often, the automobile industry and even other, some of the other tech giants are working with that. There is additional technology. It's getting into where more of a data share, but a lot of these autonomous vehicles at this level are actually self-driving. They're using more of radar and cameras, looking at the lines and signs and everything else. So the cars, the autonomous vehicles we're seeing now are really ahead of the infrastructure.
It's interesting on that too, Councilmember O'Neil, that there's the technology side, but actually, your field, the legal side, is another area where we really have some concerns. The laws haven't come up to place, just like we had in the scooter issue with the autonomous. We have had approaches from some auto manufacturers to plug into our signal system, are real hesitant to push that data out, because I'm not sure what the liability side would be on that to the city if we were to do such a thing.
Yeah, I've spent some time actually talking with the general counsel for the DMV, who was in charge of kicking out the regulations that came out last year, and it's awfully difficult. You're right, the laws, at some point, laws never catch up to technology. The technology always goes beyond that. So I was just curious, as we're moving forward, especially discussing the general plan update that I expect will probably start next year, when we're talking about the, when we're talking about circulation and whatnot, autonomous vehicles should probably start playing a role in how we're planning our city out. So anyway, thank you.
Mrs. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. Back to your comment about MacArthur Boulevard and the side street issue. What happened?
Well, we started seeing that the system was giving pretty much all the priority to MacArthur Boulevard, which on a corridor where there's less side street volume, it works a little bit better, but we were seeing that we were starting to have issues with real short greens and trouble getting cars through the intersection. So we are able to tune that out, but then we start taking away the benefit we were giving to MacArthur.
Okay, that explains my own experience when I would see one or two cars go through an intersection. On Coast Highway, so just clarify, you said that you're going to be starting the synchronization, so there's no synchronized signalization on Coast Highway now through Newport Beach?
The roadway actually is coordinated. The city of Newport Beach section between Jamboree and Newport Coast Drive, we did a while back, it could use a refresh, but the Caltrans section, I think the coordination may be a little stale at this point. So the benefit of this project is, through the grant, we're going to be able to go through and coordinate the entire roadway as one unit, as opposed to it being two different agencies in different portions.
Well, I think that's a good idea. Far be it for me to question that, but my own personal experience, because I'm back and forth many times from 5:30 in the morning until midnight, going back and forth for various reasons. Now, what's interesting to me is on the Caltrans portion, is that there'll be a pedestrian crossing Coast Highway, like at Bayside, at 5:30 in the morning, because I'm going to my exercise class, so I, everything comes to a stop for one person. Now, you want that person to be able to cross. Then later on, I will see this at further intersections, that everybody comes to a stop when it's moving really well, heavy traffic, because of, someone pushes the pedestrian cross. How do we ever, we can't, how do we solve that? Because you want the people to cross the street, but it does really put a brake on traffic.
Yeah, that's one of the challenges. Obviously, pedestrians have special rights, and we have to accommodate them with certain signal timing. Of course, there's thresholds of how long people will wait. Early morning is a different situation, of course, than midday, but it's something that we are trying to address through this new plan.
And then a year ago, I guess it was last October, when you did the presentation, and you brought up the Bluetooth, and we had a discussion in public about access to cell phone data, and it wasn't going to be a violation of privacy. So my question is, is that still the case? And number two, what have we learned from that Bluetooth data and how cars move, traffic moves through? And are they taking the bypass up to San Joaquin, and how is that working around Cronin Del Mar?
Well, yeah, first and foremost, no, we aren't receiving any private information. And again, the Bluetooth devices actually look at traffic more as a whole than individual vehicles or users. So we really get some, some broad data, more than focused data. But then we have been getting some interesting results in Cronin Del Mar with kind of the routing, I would say, of what people are doing. In fact, I've got another slide. We've received a lot of data from the Bluetooth system. We're trying to digest it still, and we're sifting through it. I've thrown together this slide here really quickly, and it's basically taking out what we saw from a peak period during a week of, I guess it'd be weekdays from June 4th to June 8th, as well as a weekend from June 2nd to the 3rd. I guess I had that reversed there. But looking at the weekend, we have three different routes here. The first route, what we call Coast Highway here, would be a user starting at Newport Coast Drive, and ultimately proceeding all the way up to the 73 freeway up MacArthur, but going through Cronin Del Mar. The second, what I call NCD or Newport Coast Drive and San Joaquin Hills Road, or SHJR, or SJHR, excuse me, would be if they went up Newport Coast Drive to San Joaquin to MacArthur, and then up to the 73 freeway. The third one is if that same car went up Newport Coast Drive all the way to Benita Canyon. So what we've done here is we've identified the three primary routes to get from Newport Coast and Coast Highway all the way to the 73 freeway, essentially what we've considered in the past to be a bypass to the toll road section. And with that, we've seen some interesting things, looking at the top chart, where going through Cronin Del Mar may be 12 minutes and 36 seconds, it's a little quicker at 11 minutes and 44 seconds to use San Joaquin, and even a little quicker to use Benita Canyon. But we're seeing that during the weekend, 75% of the users are still going through Cronin Del Mar, whereas... Corona del Mar, whereas the other 25% are choosing to go up through Newport Coast. Now, moving down into the weekday, we see the Coast Highway during the PM rush hour, we'd see four to 5 PM. We've actually increased that travel time going through Corona del Mar, again, starting at Newport Coast Drive through Corona del Mar Coast Highway, all the way up MacArthur to the 73, at 15 minutes and 16 seconds, whereas it's much quicker to go Newport Coast Drive to San Joaquin, and then just a little bit longer to use Benita Canyon. But what we're showing here is we think the commuters have figured it out, whereas we see that only 55% of those motors were choosing to go through Corona del Mar, where the other 45% was choosing to use a different route through Newport Coast. Yeah, and I think one point there, too, the differentiation with the weekend would be maybe, the weekend, we assume during the summer is maybe more visitors to the city, less of a commuter mentality. Now, these people may not know there's an alternate route, or they may just be considering that driving through Corona del Mar is the way they want to go, or it's just part of driving through town on the weekend.
So what is our, I think that's obviously very fascinating. What is our plan to make it, make people aware, to communicate that?
Well, through the Coast Highway Traffic Signal Synchronization Project that we're currently in, we are still proposing a dynamic message sign, again, one of those smaller-sized freeway style overhead signs. It's currently in Caltrans for review to make it, or to put it in the right place. It actually has to be in Caltrans' right-of-way outside of the city's right-of-way on Coast Highway. So it requires an encroachment permit from them.
It's going to be an overhead over the?
Yeah, it'll be one of those that kind of comes up and goes out, but we're not full freeway size. We want to make it the right size for the arterial, as opposed to being on the freeway. So that's currently in for review right now, and we're working with Caltrans on that. And once that's in place, then we're going to look at another directional sign-type program that would go up through Newport Coast to give options down San Joaquin Hills Road, or even up through to Benita Canyon.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pieter.
Brad, very thorough. You've kind of addressed some of my questions already. You know, I know that it's been a long process. We tried to push the whole smart street item in the beginning of 2017, but by the time we came up with a plan and then implemented it, we've just now had the Bluetooth in place now, hard construction for what, a quarter, you know, four months? And as Councilwoman Dixon was saying, you know, we're collecting a lot of data, and part of that data is that we're going to be able to sit there and say, oh yeah, this car went from point A to point B, or C, or D, and be able to tell how many of those people perhaps that are going through Newport Coast, I'm sorry, past Newport Coast Drive and driving through Corona del Mar, how many of them are doing like you suggested, getting on the 73? How many of them are going, you know, north through the city all the way to Honeyna Beach? How many of them are staying local? When do you think we're going to be able to have data along those lines?
Well, this system actually won't give us actual counts. So again, this isn't looking at individual users or individual cars. We're looking more at patterns. I think the benefit to the system now is we're also seeing when that congestion is happening, which of course, when we get into an automated sign, it'll give us the opportunity to then know when to turn that sign on, or when we should start trying to reroute traffic. But again, it's not going to give us actual volumes. We're still looking for that second step to where we can assign a number to the percentage.
Okay, so I, but it still gives us the ability to track them as they go through the city. And I say track, it's not like we've got, you know, eye in the sky or anything, but as they go past, let's say Newport Coast and PCH, we know that whatever their Bluetooth identifier number is, that they went through there. And then we have another reader at, say Bison and MacArthur, like they're going to get on the 73, and we'll know that they went through there. So we can assume that they went that route to either get to the 73 or go up to MacArthur Boulevard area. And the same thing with a reader in the west side of town. So that was part of the idea and what we wanted to do. Are you telling me that that's just, we're not even close to implementing that yet?
Not with this system. Again, we're not looking at individual users. So the level of what we're getting now is going to be more percentage. So of the traffic that went through there, 25% went this way, 75% went that way. And then we can, we can drill that down to the time of day. We can talk about how long it took and start formulating why that's happening and look for bottlenecks, but we at this point do not have the ability to track the actual number of cars that went up Newport Coast versus.
So is it a software or hardware issue, or both?
It's not part of the system.
Okay, that's how it was sold to us. So I'm kind of surprised to hear that that's not part of the system at all. Yes, I don't mind having the extra information that we're talking about in the intersections, but the intent was is that you'd be able to follow that unique identifier in that car to, and see if he's through traffic or he's local traffic, at least based on the number of intersections that we were going to put the system in. So I'd like to see a plan on how you're going to implement that, whether it means a new system, or whether it means getting better software for the existing system, however that works. But that information is, in effect, real-time information that we can see patterns, which without this kind of technology, you know, you have to stop the driver and survey him, you know, where did you start, where did you end up your trip, and that kind of thing. Here's a way that ideally we're able to take and anonymously find that, hey, that car went from point A to point B, you know, he cut through the city instead of being a local traffic. The, your driving times are good, that's good and valuable information, and hopefully with the signs, we can start to divert people. But having more accurate information is going to be important, too. So I'd like to, like to see and I'd like to hear that.
And I'm just going to clarify, Mr. Pieter. Brad, I thought we talked about we could get to volumes because we have percentage of flows, and if you then do a count on the street, if it's tube count or a count on the signal, you know 10,000 cars went this way, but 75% of them came this way. So you could back calc a volume. Is that not correct?
Well, it's a bit more challenging. It's something we've been looking into, but we're only tracking the cars that made that actual run. So what we've done is we've set up an entry gate at Newport Coast and an exit gate up at the 73. So if we take just a general volume, what's going to happen is we're also including all those cars that may have stopped at Rosa's Donuts, or may have continued down West Coast Highway and gotten on the Balboa Peninsula. So in there lies the issue is where we're trying to decipher who truly went up there and who didn't. And then the other complexity with this is a vehicle could have multiple unique MAC addresses on it, or unique addresses. You know, the idea that was always sold to me was it could be a bus full of, you know, the football team from Harbor High could be going through, and they all have their cellphones on. Well, that's just a whole bunch of information that we just got, but it was only one vehicle that went through that intersection. But it is something we hear you and we are looking forward to.
No, I understand you've got the difficulty of interpreting the data, especially with volumes. And like Mr. Webb said, I assume that there'd be other ways of counting vehicles, either through our loops or other detectors, that would somehow get real-time numbers from the Bluetooth. But if that same bus from Newport Harbor goes through Newport Coast, and then all of that same data goes through on PCH, we're going to know that that vehicle went that direction. It didn't split up into 50 different directions, and that it could probably be counted as one vehicle because they all came through at the same time in two different places. So it sounds like the information is out there and it's there, and that's what was kind of sold to us on this system, that we'd be able to interpret that and start to get travel destination-type information. I mean, if we have, you know, X number of cars that are going right through, right through Newport Beach on PCH, it'd be nice to know that. It'd be nice to be able to work with Caltrans on that. I think, you know, obviously when you're working on your traffic signals and everything else, the volumes are the important part. But destinations and trying to change people in the way that they use our roads, it'd be nice to know how they use them first. So I look forward to hearing that. You wanted feedback in the study session. I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Brad, for the report. What does it mean when an intersection fails in your parlance?
Well, an intersection failure, I guess I'm thinking more of a minor malfunction, where the signal may go into red flash, or even go dark, say if there's a power outage or something of that nature.
I was thinking more of fails in terms of numbers of trips through, and you know, how many, how many sequences are needed to get the lineup of traffic through?
So like a level of service?
Right.
Situation or a traffic flow?
Is there a number? I mean, when we're looking at development and we're looking at signals and then increased traffic flow, is there a measure to where we say that this intersection is going to fail because it takes, you know, a certain amount of time or a certain amount of sequences before the traffic that's waiting for that signal gets through?
There are a few ways that we do measure that. One is purely off volume, and other way is to look at it more in-depth and how the signal operates. But it is something we calculate and we do when we're doing development studies. I believe the number now, I can ask Tony, is about 1,600 vehicles per lane per hour. So it would be 1,600 vehicles, say, per through lane we have there. If you have to, it would be, you know, 3,200 vehicles per hour, per lane.
Right. Do we have any intersections that fail now in the city occasionally?
From observation, we have some that definitely get congested.
Right.
I don't know offhand what the general plan would say about what intersections are forecast to fail.
Right. But I would assume that this system will help alleviate that. It's going to increase flow, and when it's ultimately up and working properly, you're going to have less congestion, right?
Yeah, and that's.
I'm stating the obvious, but.
Absolutely. That's the goal, is to improve flow, and we're looking to these technologies to help enhance that beyond the old way of thinking of just add another lane, which of course, we don't have the room anymore.
Right.
So with this sort of thing, we're using it to fine-tune our traffic signal timing, fine-tune our coordination, and look for those periods of time where it is congested that we may not have seen before, just by being in the office and watching the monitors or being out in the field and driving it ourselves.
Right, because we have some areas of the city that have pending large developments, all within the general plan, that nonetheless will produce a lot more traffic on the road and pull cars through. So I think anything we can do, this is great, and it's really important to residents. Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I wanted to follow up on the conversation Mr. Pieter was having. So Caltrans obviously owns the portion of Coast Highway from Newport Boulevard to MacArthur? Or to Bayside? Well, anyway, that portion of Caltrans. Are they measuring traffic flow with any equipment that they must have on the signals?
Actually, Caltrans deployed the same system, so we're able to share the data, which means we get to see their data as well. They operate from the San Ana River Trail, or the San Ana River, to Jamboree, and then they operate on the east end of city from Newport Coast out to the Laguna border.
I, for one, would appreciate maybe our annual report of traffic flows through the city. I mean, we deal with this because the community cares a great deal about traffic. And I know Mr. Pieter has made this comment, that I'm going to state now, he's made this publicly, that a lot of the traffic is not indigenous to Newport in terms of its homes and residences, coming from north or west or east of us and traveling through. And it would be instructive to know, I routinely say 11 million people visit Newport Beach every year. That comes to me from various sources, I guess. But traveling on Coast Highway, which is impacting our community, I'd like to know if somebody's measuring that, because it really affects our general plan and how the community thinks about how their elected representatives are managing traffic, and a lot of it, we don't have control over, but we don't even know how much it is. I'd like to know how much it is. Is there a way to do that?
Well, we do have volumes for Coast Highway that do show up, but again, we can't differentiate between if it's a resident or not a resident. I think that's where.
No, 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 I get that, but I mean, just to follow up on Mr. Pieter's point, I mean, just the distances that are traveled.
On both sides.
Per vehicle. I mean, we could, we could at least see what is the traffic volume on that portion of Coast Highway that gets clogged up most frequently. And similarly on Jamboree and MacArthur, just to know the volume of traffic that is coming into the city and leaving the city.
Yeah, and that's where we're going, and then looking into counting with the traffic signal system, so we can kind of get more of a real-time in and out, so to speak, where we can see what volume is coming in on a particular day versus what volume may be going out on different arterials. And that's where we can utilize or leverage our traffic signal system and our vehicle detection to then get more of an accurate count.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not critical of what you're doing. I'm thrilled we're trying to get our arms around this and understand this from an IT standpoint. I think that's absolutely critical for traffic management and traffic safety, but I have no idea, or we have no idea, what the volumes are on our streets and highways. I mean, I think it would be instructive.
If I could interject, Tony Bryant, do you mind coming up? They do do volume counts, and OCTA, if you go on their website, they do counts, too, and sometimes you see our tube counts. Could you speak of the volume counts we do and how they look at that annually?
Yes, hi, Mayor, Council. Tony Bryant, City Traffic Engineer. We do regular counts, either biannually, on all of the segments within the city, all the roadway segments, main arterials. And in addition, we do intersection counts as well. The intersection counts are used in the base calculations for a lot of these traffic development projects and development studies. So it's a regular collection of data that we always have, we keep in our files, so we can access that data at any time.
All right, well, thank you very much. Food for thought. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have one little quick comment. You guys, I found this out this week, and you forgot to take credit for this. Apparently, and if you've not been in an ambulance, you probably don't appreciate it as much as I do, but apparently that we're able to turn off and turn on the signals for our fire trucks and ambulances, and apparently other cities cannot. For example, Irvine told me they can't do that. So I applaud you for doing that, and I think it's a great technology, so don't leave that out on your next report. That's, that is so important, that we have a method of getting you to the hospital and avoiding all these signals. Is that true? I mean.
Yes, we do. We have what we call emergency vehicle preemption, that our firefighters and ambulances use that will change the signal to green for the movement they're going and stop everybody else to not only speed up their progression through the city, but also create a safer passage for them.
Awesome. Well, I make a motion that all of us on the dais get one of those buttons. Do I hear a second? Jeff, you don't want? Okay. All right. So we have public comments on this item? Please come up.
Mayor and Council, Tim Stokes. Dave, I've got two questions. How long has the city had, went from not-so-smart signalization to signalization, or sequential signalization? And then the second question, how do you measure the benchmark of improvement? And what are you trying to qualify as improvement?
So let me actually turn that to Brad or Tony on. I know I've been here now 12 years, and we really started aggressively going after our modernization. The signals have been coordinated before that at some level.
Can I get a point of order, Mr.?
Yeah, it's really an opportunity to make public comments, not a chance to ask questions. I'm sure Dave would be happy to meet with you at some other time, though, if you'd like.
Sorry. Next speaker.
Mayor Duffield, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. First, I wanted to say I'm a little confused, as I often am, about the data that we're getting from the Bluetooth sensors. It appeared to me that the slide that Brad was showing us was indeed showing that we are getting the information that was promised, and I believe the slide was showing the distribution of the trips from the intersection of PCH Newport Coast Drive, all the cars that start there and end at the corner of MacArthur and Bison, and it was showing the percentage of how many go on the different routes. And I think that is the information that was promised, so I'm a little confused that we're not getting what we want. Second comment I wanted to make about this word synchronization that we hear so much about. Technology is good, and it's much appreciated, but I think Brad would agree that there's a theoretical problem with synchronization, and people should not unrealistically think that they're going to get, like that ambulance, a string of green lights in more than one If you are in the ambulance with the clicker, you get the green lights going one way, but that timing is not going to be good timing for somebody else. So I think it's a fact of life, wherever in the world there is a traffic signal, there is going to be somebody trying to go in some direction who is going to be stopped at that light, and technology is never going to entirely solve that. And then the third comment I wanted to make is that regarding. And then the third comment I wanted to make is that regarding the ten or eleven million visitors a year, it would be good if we knew that because that same, if you go back and look at the City Council minutes, that same number has been quoted in the City Council chambers back for the last thirty years and has never changed, which makes us wonder if Visit Newport Beach is actually doing something for us or not. Thank you.
All right. Any other speakers? Seeing none, I, real quick comment, I really apologize for not letting us answer questions. I would think that a study session, you could ask a question and you could get an answer, okay? So I'm, I'm in favor of that, but we do have this other method, so while we're in that mode, this is what we have to abide by, but just wanted to point that out. I'm sorry we had to do that to you. So now, moving on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Any would like to come forward?
Mayor Duffield, members of the council, my name is, again, Jim Mosher, and on the comment that you yourself just made, I would agree with you and I would point out that if an item is on the agenda, the Brown Act does not, it's not the Brown Act that is preventing a dialogue between the public and the staff. It would be some policy that you yourselves can set for how you want the meetings to be run. If an item is on the agenda, discussion on it is allowed. And speaking about items on the agenda, yesterday, I sent you several pages of comments about the draft minutes that you're going to be looking at tonight. I had them mislabeled as Agenda Item 1 because the minutes are almost always Agenda Item 1, but I noticed on tonight's agenda, you have a different Item 1, which you're going to be voting on somehow in just a minute, which is the designation of your labor negotiation representative. And I would applaud you for taking this vote. I had always thought that the Brown Act only required you to have an announcement of who the designated representative was. I didn't know you had to vote on it, but it's good to see you're doing that. From having been here at the Civil Service Board meeting last night, I'm not sure I entirely believe that when you get to Item A at the closed session, you're actually going to be having that negotiator negotiate with all of the organizations that are listed there. It seemed like the current negotiations are only with a few of those. And then I especially can't applaud Item B, which tells us that you're going to have another discussion about anticipated litigation on some topic that the public has no idea what you're talking about, initiating litigation about. At your last meeting, you had such a thing and when it came back in the evening, we learned that you had unanimously voted to, in, to spend taxpayer money on a Newport Beach lawsuit involving the Orange County Needle Exchange Program, which to some of us who did not hear your closed session discussion, might find a little redundant because as I understand it, Orange County has, has a lawsuit to the same effect. Cities of Anaheim, Costa Mesa, and Orange have lawsuits, and I think even the Orange County Flood Control District. So spending Newport Beach money on yet another lawsuit seems a little redundant and perhaps if that had been discussed in open session, you might or might not have come to a different conclusion. I'm not sure why that had to be in closed session. And speaking of those, back on March twenty-seventh, you again had a similar topic, anticipated litigation. In the evening meeting, it was announced that you'd voted for three to initiate litigation about something. I still haven't heard what that is nearly six months later. And so finally, I see you're going to be evaluating the city attorney. I would like to make a constructive suggestion. Due to the public not knowing much about what's happening with litigation, just like the Community Development Department has a list of all the pending planning applications, it would be nice for the city attorney office to post the list of the pending litigation so that the public can see what the status of that is, have access to the pleadings that we, the people, have paid for and know how much each case is costing us, including the settlement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, bring it back. Mr. Harp? Next item?
So we actually have a consent counter item that we moved up in front of the closed session, if you want to consider that item next.
All right. How would I proceed to do that? Ask, do I need a straw vote or something?
Under A1, the mayor has the ability to, to modify the agenda, correct, Mr. Harp? And, and if I understand correctly, the, the purpose of doing this is to ensure that when we go back into closed session, we actually have the designated representative, which would now be our new city, city manager as the designated representative.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. So we don't need a staff report? Don't assume? Any questions up here? Seeing none? Public comments? All right, seeing none? Oh, sorry?
My, my only comment is you don't actually have to modify the agenda. The agenda is published this way. Thank you.
Right. Is there a motion?
Oh, moved.
Please vote.
All right, so now, oh, sorry.
Motion carries unanimously, six, zero.
All right, closed session, Mr. Harp?
Yes, I got ahead of myself. Closed session, the City Council will adjourn to closed session to discuss Items 5A through C, including meeting with labor negotiators, city manager Grace Leung, Assistant City Manager Carol Jacobs, Human Resources Director Barbara Silvini, and Peter Brown to discuss labor negotiations with those unions that are listed under Agenda Item Number 5A. The council will also meet to discuss one matter of potential initiation of litigation and to meet to discuss the performance of the city clerk and the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
There's no closed session report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have the invocation by Mr. Muldoon and our pledge of allegiance by Mr. Avery.
Before I commence the prayer, I think we ought to spend a couple moments of silence to reflect upon the occurrences on September eleventh. Heavenly Father, we come to you today humbly to thank you for keeping our nation safe since the events of nine eleven. Our prayers go out especially for the families and the victims of those who passed on that day. We thank you for our military and first responders. We ask that you bless them and keep them safe as they protect us and keep us safe. We pray that we do not change our ways of goodwill and neighborly love in the face of evil and remember to be kind to fellow man. We ask that your peace be spread around the world and we thank you for everything you have given us in terms of freedom and safety. In Jesus' name, amen.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
All right, we'll now have the City Council announcements and new items council members would like to put, introduce on the future agendas. Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Mr. Pieter?
None.
Dixon?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I want to clarify an item for, is this we're dealing with the next item, fourteen, this one that's already there? Is this the time to speak on this? Or just thirteen? Okay. Oh, all right. Anyway, so I have an announcement. Actually, one of my constituents asked me last evening at my town hall if I would announce. He, he is a member of the Orange County Grand Jury and this is a good announcement to, for our residents to know that the application period to serve on the next grand jury opens October twentieth and extends through January eighteenth. So if you are a citizen who is interested to how to improve government and respond to citizen complaints and even issue indictments for serious crimes, exclamation point here, it's on this form, and make sure your, and our local tax dollars are wisely spent and evaluate conditions at our county jails, if any of this is interesting, please apply to ocggrandjury.org and you might have a, a great professional experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurnman?
I'm always a little confused about what I should announce now and what I shouldn't. So I'm going to go ahead and make a few announcements, all right? I want to commend and thank our City Arts Commission on the series of concerts that they offered this summer. I especially want to thank and commend Arlene Greer, who is the Chair of the Arts Commission. I believe there's a picture up on the screen of just this last Sunday's concert and if you look at the picture on the right, you can get the scope of the number of people that participated. And this last Sunday was no exception to the amount of people that enjoyed and partake, took in these concerts. There is one last concert that is going to be held on the Peninsula, Peninsula Park on September twenty-third, Southland Sings, Broadway Hits. Come, enjoy it, all right? And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Muldoon?
Thank you. On Sunday, I was invited to attend and attended the Tunnel Towers Annual Run, which is put on in remembrance of nine eleven. Our firefighters participated in it as well as some public safety personnel from our city. And it was great to see the support from surrounding agencies as well, as we met at William Mason Regional Park in Irvine. Do you want me to do things on the calendar as well, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. And I'd like to, logic recusal on item number six due to a conflict. It involves, I believe, some undergrounding at Grant Howard Park, Howell Park, excuse me, and I work with a, a business in telecommunications, so I have a business conflict there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Proton?
Sure, a few things. So wanted to say a brief thank you to Chief Lewis for letting me sit in on the dispatch. It was great to see how phenomenal our dispatch truly is. The pavilions down near the Port Streets has been reopened as Pavilions 2.0. They had a grand reopening. I was able to attend and cut a ribbon. If you haven't seen it, by all means, please do. I was also able to attend the Orange County Transportation Authority Mayor's Forum, held by, hosted by Supervisor Michelle Steele, where we talked quite a bit about a number of things, including what we talked about at the study session, signal synchronization. So hopefully, you've noticed some easing a little bit here and there on MacArthur and Jamboree, but if you missed our study session, by all means, go back and check it out. Coming up, we've got the League of Cities Conference and then this morning was the Lincoln Elementary School Blood Drive. They always have a great attendance, so I just want to say thank you for, for Lincoln for hosting that one. On that topic, schools are back in session. You've probably noticed it. For everyone here, for everyone at home, please pay attention to the fact that schools are back in session. That means some kids will be on their bikes. We've talked about it in other previous study sessions, but twenty-five means twenty-five, so please, please, please pay attention to the fact that schools are now back in session. My Newport High School mentee is here, which is great, great program. I'm really excited about it. I'm excited to have my mentee learning a little bit more about civics. And the last thing is, I think we've got some slides for this, the Oasis Events. So first, September is National Preparedness Month. The city's Emergency Services Coordinator, Katie Ing, is hosting a disaster preparedness presentation on Wednesday, September twelfth, at eleven AM. Come and learn what you can do to be prepared for a disaster and to find out what is important to have on hand and what is not. Residents are asked to RSVP for the event by calling Oasis staff at nine four nine six four four three two four four, which is up on the slide right now. And then the second is on Tuesday, September eighteenth, from six to eight PM, Oasis is hosting a special screening of the Netflix original film Endgame, followed by a discussion on the topic of end-of-life care. The New York Times Film Review stated this is, "An intimate look at how doctors, nurses, and patients at two San Francisco Bay Area hospitals cope with death." Just an uplifting night all around, apparently, but there you go. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I believe we have a slide coming. Mr. Webb, would you like to start this off or you want me to?
Sure, I can, I can discuss this. We have some exciting news that the mayor's referring to here. As you're aware, the city's advocating quite hardly with the federal government, state agencies to try to gain some federal money to come to Newport Beach and take care of some projects. We had a meeting just recently and you can see this picture here, we had Congressman Dana Rohrbacher out there, County Supervisor Michelle Steele, Mayor Duffield, the Corps of Engineer staff with the new Colonel and some other staff, and we were successful in getting funding for the Surfside Sunset project, which is an important project to the city. This is where they re-nerdish the beaches up in Surfside Sunset, just west of Huntington Beach. That sand that they put on the beach here ultimately works its way all the way down to our beach and feeds our beach. So we're, we're excited. They did give us some news. They hadn't done this project since two thousand and nine, but we're excited they're doing that now. And then we had one, one of the piece of good news that we heard. We have been, as you know, Councilman Avery and Mayor Duffield have been twice tonight dragging to Washington to try to get some federal money and thank you for going on that trip. And it's starting to pay success. The Corps finally put our project in their work plan and we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money in the federal work plan to start the design of the dredging and we'll keep those efforts going and try to get the millions next year for the actual construction. Back to you, Mayor.
So there are three major rivers, basically, that are, or streams, if you will, that have been diverted and dammed upstream and those were the method, that was the method of getting this heavy grain material out into the ocean and down to replenish our beaches. For eighteen years, we've not done that and once these, excuse me, let me keep explaining, the Army Corps acknowledged way back when, right in the twenties even, that when these folks started putting in storm drains and moving, building homes and diverting the, the rivers, that they were going to have to step up to the plate and come up with a replenishment plan, which was to every year, put sand up on Sunset Beach and as Mr. Webb explained, have it be pulled out naturally off the beach and what's called the latatorial drift make its way down to replenish our beaches. For eighteen years, we've not had that happen. And so we see significant reduction in our surf beaches. I'm, I'm happy to say that Mr. Rohrbacher and Michelle Steele were adamant that we begin doing this again and that was great news. So with that in mind, also with the additional money to help dredge, it was a great, a great day on the beach up there. So it takes a long time to get things done, but I can assure you that it's great news to hear that they're actually, we're actually acknowledging a method to solve a problem. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sorry.
I have one more announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go for it.
This involves a, a small but significant Public Works project in my, in my district, Newport Heights, across from Harbor High School. We, as many people know, we've had a few accidents, close calls, tragedy in Newport Heights involving kids trying to get to school and- And so we've had a very long-going study, in traffic study up there, and we're still working on it because it's not easy to drive change into an existing neighborhood. But one thing that did happen that was really positive, along with a couple of other sections of sidewalk, right across the high school there, in the slide, you can see the before and after slides of telephone pole and some power lines, and then diagonal parking, and then in front of that parking, no sidewalk at all. And this is right across from the high school. And so over the summer, for a couple of months, this project got undergrounded, and a new sidewalk was put in, allowing a whole new way for kids to get down to the crosswalk and over to Harbor without going behind these cars you see parked here diagonally. And our Public Works Department got on this and got it done, and got the lines undergrounded and the sidewalk in, in time for school, and at no cost to the city. It was funded by Edison and AT&amp;T. So this isn't the only little section here, and actually, it's kind of a big section, but there's other sections in the heights that we're going after to link up sidewalks and bring kids to crosswalks and specific areas more safely. And also, out of that study, we've got some more work to do, but a significant number of small but important changes have occurred just before school started to make it safer for parents to drop off their kids and make drivers more aware of where they are. They're in a school zone, and we need everybody to drive a little more responsibly and pay attention. But I'm just always so impressed, and I know these projects are actually going on all over town, and they're small projects, but collectively, they make a big difference when we engage partners and our terrific Public Works Department gets going and gets projects done like this that are sometimes little notice, but collectively make a big difference in our community. So my thanks to Director Webb and Mike Senicori and all the other fine people in Public Works for getting this done, particularly in time for school. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll now move on to matters which council members have asked to be placed on future agenda, and we have one in particular from --
If I could just interrupt for just a second, I just wanted to note that Councilman Muldoon had left the room during the discussion of that last item due to potential conflicts he has related to the telecommunication industry and business interests.
All right.
That's for the 15th Street item.
Thank you.
May I speak? Thank you. I want to clarify this item, and Mr. Webb, since you're sitting there, maybe you could help clarify. It probably doesn't need to be a council session discussion as much as a study session, and the intent is to help bring understanding and clarity to our residents of what our existing city municipal code requires regarding trees, public trees and private trees. Our municipal code only relates to trees in the public space. And Mr. Webb, if you wouldn't mind just explaining what potential clarifications need to be made. This isn't about new rules as much as clarifying existing rules to benefit the residents.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. When I heard this item, we thought it might be beneficial if it so pleases the council. Our council policies, or several of our G policies, cover our tree planting, reforestation, view privacy issues, and it might be worth us to come back at the study session and brief the council and the committee on this. This question comes up quite a lot in certain areas, particularly in Councilmember Piattar's district and Mr. Muldoon's district, where we have views and other things. The tree issues tend to come up, and I don't know if the public fully understands the council policy. So if it pleases you, we'd come back and maybe give you a quick study session on those policies and do a question and answer, if you like.
Well, that was the intent.
All right, so --
Yeah, just briefly, we put these on as non-discussion items, so that's probably about all we can do with that.
All right, well, so you'd like this to be an item for study session, is that correct? All right. Let's draw a vote, please.
The record will reflect 6 to 1. Mayor Protem O'Neill did not concur.
All right. Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 10. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members are received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. All right, council, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. Avery? Mr. Piattar? Mrs. Dixon?
Let me just ask a question. Is anyone going to pull number seven, or are your -- were your questions resolved?
Questions resolved.
Okay, yeah, then I feel the same way, too. So, no, I do not have anything to pull.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman?
None.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon?
I'm a little rusty on that extra vacation. That recusal I had mentioned earlier, I'm going to mention again, item number six, due to conflict of interest related business employment.
And Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I have a recusal on number five due to it being within a certain amount of distance from my house.
And I have nothing to pull.
All right, so I move the balance of the consent calendar with recusals noted from me on number five and Councilmember Muldoon on number six.
Oh, second.
Thank you. Now we'll go to public comments on the consent calendar. Are there any -- anyone wish to come up and speak on the consent calendar items? Please come up. Consent calendar.
Thank you very much. My name is Ryan Reza Farsai. My address is 52 Belcourt Drive, and I'm the youngest owner in Belcourt Park community, which is in start the Belcourt Master. And I'm here to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, that my home has been broken into several times.
Just briefly, this is a chance to comment on the consent calendar items, and there'll be an opportunity for general public comment later.
There'll be an opportunity for you to come back. No.
This is just on the consent calendar right now.
Consent calendar.
Sorry. It'll be just a moment.
All right, so try it again. Mr. Moser?
Thank you, Mayor Duffield, members of the council. My name is Jim Moser, and regarding the consent calendar, I'm usually startled by the council's lack of public curiosity about what you're being asked to approve on the consent calendar. So it was refreshing at your session this afternoon that the Mayor Protem asked for an explanation of why the landscaping costs in item seven had gone up so much. The $1,000 tree plantings did seem a little bit pricey to me, but at least that was an In connection with that, it still made me curious whether any of you have actually looked at item number nine, which is explaining what we're going to do with the very generous donation that we got from the Newport Beach Library Foundation. And if you looked at the last page of that, which is the budget amendment, you would notice you're being asked to approve $10,000 for a new PC. Now, $10,000 for a PC sounds a little pricey to me, even more so than a $1,000 tree. And I was going to ask if it included a mouse and a keyboard for the $10,000, but fortunately, at the study session, I was sitting next to our library director, Mr. Ethererton, and he explained to me, although it says it's for a new PC, it's actually for quite a few PCs that will be for a new children's program. So the $10,000 is not quite as outrageous as it is, but I really wonder if you looked at that page or not. Other item I want to comment on is item number four, which is the expansion of our categorical exclusion order that excludes certain kinds of development from the requirements to get a coastal development permit. And from the staff report, and I'm -- this is actually just a ratification of something that you approved at an earlier meeting to ask the Coastal Commission to approve, and it may seem fairly innocuous, but it's actually asking on small lots, the way it's written, which is rather inartful, makes it look like it's increasing the limit for how much you can build on a small lot, which is defined in terms of what's called the ratio of the floor area to the buildable area from 1.5, which is already a pretty big house. I happen to live in a house that has a ratio of .34, and I guess I'm ashamed that I have such a small house on a big lot, although it doesn't seem that way to me. But this is going up from 1.4 to 2, and 2 is -- that means it completely filling the lot in two stories. It's a very big house. It's the kind of mansion we don't want, and I don't think the council is really wanting to encourage going from 1.5 to 2. This appears to be doing that, but it's actually, according to the fine print, saying that's allowed only if the code elsewhere allows that. I'm a little uncomfortable with this because our community development department does sometimes, when something gets approved, read it in a way that's not the obvious way. So I hope it's well-understood that it's not trying to increase the floor area limit on those, and it's being done for some other reason, which I don't have time to explain. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other people that would like to come up and speak on the consent calendar items? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Are there any -- I don't see any questions from council. We have a motion in a second. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right, okay. Welcome aboard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ryan Reza Farsai. My address is 52 Belcourt Drive. One of the youngest -- I am the youngest owner in Belcourt Park, and I'm also a member of Belcourt Master. So I'm here to increase the light in your mind and your heart tonight, and continue to poke the city staff. Chief Lewis, I'm trying to understand. This is a copy of the United States Constitution. Today is Patriot Day. God bless to the spirit of everyone who fights for our flag, for the honor of our flag, the integrity of our flag. This is very important to me. This is the United States Constitution, sir, madam. The Fourth Amendment protects citizens from law enforcement entering their home without their permission or an order from the court. So what I explained, I have a problem with my HOA that entered into my home. They put a hole in my side yard. I asked the plumber, what are you doing? He said, I'm working for the HOA. I said, you're great. You're allowed to work on the other side of the fence. Inside this fence, you need my permission. You don't have your permission. Here's my video camera. I'm recording everything. Thank you very much. You're trespassing. So you have a hole there. You have to cover it up. I have a seven-year-old daughter. I have to get her from school in an hour. You have to go to Home Depot, go get a piece of plywood, and cover this up. I have a five-pound dog. Hurry up and get out of here. So that's what happened. Now we're here almost a year later. The HOA has a hole in the side of my yard. Now they want me to kill the tree. They managed to somehow get the police to come in my home somehow several times. I've already talked, sent letters to Chief Lewis. I've talked many times. I've called Detective Wood. I've gone to the police department, filed many reports, something. Nothing has happened. I went to the City Hall. Guess what I got in the planning department? It's beautiful. I'm a student of Dr. Rocky Tarantello, their former neighbor. I'm going to be his best student. I'm a student of Dr. Stephen Sample, my beta brother, also Donald Brenn's brother. That's who I am. So guess what? I'm not here to fight them or sue them, because I would be suing myself, right? I'm a member of the association. They're telling me, go hire a lawyer. So let me get this straight. I want to go hire a lawyer to sue myself. Does that make sense to you guys? None of this makes sense to me. This is the way our country works. The donkeys and the elephants. The donkeys run the courtrooms. The elephants wants you to go into fights. I'm neither. I'm the white lion. I'm trying to understand here, sir, what happened? My rights are being broken, Chief Lewis. I didn't break the law. I brought the -- this is the six pages from the city planning department? This is the receipt from the city? These are the plans. There is no side yard work that should be doing on my side yard. They broke into my home, and they're using the police to interrogate me and cause me headaches. They scared my daughter on Friday the 13th. This is my daughter's birth certificate. She was born in Hope Hospital. I'm a Los Angelian. Thank you very much for your time. And God bless to the spirit of everyone that fights for the freedom and justice and liberty for everyone. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to come up? You can go to the other one, ma'am.
My name is Mary Ann Zippy, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm one of many citizens bewildered by the laws of government agencies, from the IRS to the FBI to California's defiance of federal statutes, and now what looks like voter fraud in Newport Beach. To my fellow citizens, you decide if the following looks like voter fraud to you. It begins in 2015 when city officials asked residents to vote on a parking permit program they wanted to impose on seven blocks of the Balboa Peninsula. They sent only one ballot each to about 1,300 buildings. The municipal code mandates that a 50% plus one majority of residents must agree to this program, and there are at least two people living at most addresses, residents or people, not buildings. This means that nearly 1,300 people, half the people affected, were disenfranchised because they never got a ballot and so were denied their right to vote. The city wants the $250,000 yearly revenue from this program, so they concluded last time that 50% of ballots returned was a majority, which amounted to 269 ballots. Because half of the people were disenfranchised, the count should have been nearly 1,300 for a majority, 1,000 votes more than the city counted. Phoning majority in hand, they sent it to the Coastal Commission for approval in 2016. It was not approved. Which brings us to today. In a letter to residents dated two months ago on June 22nd, the city, in a second attempt to force the parking permit program, declared that, quote, "The program described is the same as the program considered in 2015." Ballots were again sent to residential buildings, not to each resident in those buildings. The fact that the city included two names on one ballot is a gambit to confuse voters, since never in the U.S. voting history do two names on the same ballot equal two votes. The letter also leads citizens to believe that Newport Beach now has the right to issue this parking permit program without the approval of the Coastal Commission, but this isn't true. The city has submitted an amendment to the Coastal Commission, which, according to them, won't even be reviewed until October, and the city can't do anything until it is approved. So we do have time to stop this, but it gets worse. Another ballot came just last month, a response date of August 22nd. This time, however, instead of being addressed to even one of the residents, it was addressed to, quote, "current occupant," unquote. My dog can now vote for parking permits, and hundreds of phantom residents as well. Does the term ballot stuffing come to mind? Don't city officials know that the Newport Beach Administrative Code mandates penalties for anyone, including city officials, who violate the municipal code? I've been told by council members that the city needs money because it has $275 million unfunded pension liability. This program would add to the pension liability. I've heard council members say, let's give the program a try and see if it works. We can extend it, or we can always cancel it. Right. I am asking my fellow citizens to contact your city council members and the new candidates for city council as well, and oppose this because be assured that the city has its way. Every current occupant from Peninsula Point to Corona del Mar will have to pay to park in front of their homes or get a permission slip from the city when they need to park a carload of guests. Following the money means your vote could be taken away next time.
All right, thank you. Are there any other people who'd like to speak on non-agenda items? Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Denise Oberman, and I'm here to speak on my own behalf and also on behalf of some other residents who asked that I speak. First, we'd like to welcome Ms. Grace Lung to the new position of City Manager. We believe that you were and are well be the right choice for the candidate that will serve us best in that important capacity. We're counting on you to help drive decisions that are truly aligned with the interests of both the residents and the city, and also to be the first line of defense on our collective behalf against unsound and potentially reckless decisions which may arise from various initiatives on the part of the City Council. We could have had a much different outcome. On behalf of myself and the others here, I'd like to publicly thank Councilman Jeff Hurdman for sounding the alarm when the name of the candidate, Shawn Nelson, surfaced as candidate for the potential to be appointed and hired for the City Manager position. Councilman Hurdman, along with the strong community voice, was successful in enabling us to dodge that bullet. It was disconcerting that other council members had drafted a statement that was delivered through the voice of the city attorney with apparent goal of embarrassing Councilman Hurdman. This was very upsetting to us, the public. We noticed that the statement failed to tell us the names of the council members that, in fact, favored this potential candidate, Nelson. In a response to a Public Records Act request that was tendered, there was a statement that the city proclaimed Act request that was tendered, there was a statement that the city proclaimed that it had, quote, "No documents responsive to this question." Really? This was really—quite frankly, this was really insulting to the public. Yet one more example of an approach that is quite the opposite of open and transparent government. We would like to give you three that did in fact serve as proponents for that candidate the chance to tell us who you were. Who supported that candidate? A person who had absolutely no qualifications to be considered for the position of city manager. And for those council members who were not in favor of that candidate and helped us to go in a constructive direction, we would like to express our appreciation, and we'd like to know who you are in order that we could do so directly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Lynn Swain, and I have gained some notoriety recently because of the insulting comments made about me by Team Newport supporter Bob McCaffrey. But that is not why I'm here tonight. I'm here to protest the abusive, condescending, threatening, and insulting language used in an 11:00 p.m. email from Scott Piattar to multiple members of our city staff and members of the Finance Committee. Our fine city staff members should not have to endure abuse at the hands of out-of-control council members who lack the basic decency or sense of propriety. Perhaps Piattar's behavior should not be surprising, since he was the only member of the city council to vote against the city's sexual harassment prevention policy, and it obviously does not respect women or our city workers. The esteemed Tom Johnson, who really speaks for the soul of our community, put it best when he wrote, quote, "Piattar's behavior is simply, continually unacceptable. We, as a community, should be fed up with the tone that he uses to any city employee. It's absolutely acceptable, unacceptable, and I couldn't agree more." The emails in question indicate Piattar was actively trying to revive his dangerous, reckless, and in some cases, just plain foolish ideas that have been rejected by the Finance Committee. The city council should make it clear that abuse and harassment by members of the city council will not be tolerated, and remove Piattar from the Finance Committee now before he can do more lasting damage. To do otherwise, much like McCaffrey's remarks, makes you complicit in his reprehensible behavior. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other speakers?
Good evening. My name is Lynn Lorenz, and I've lived in the Heights for over 40 years. I retired from the field of education 10 years ago, and for the last five years have become a council, a frequent council observer and an activist. These are some of my observations. Those of you who are also council observers will know to whom I am referring, to the innocent, I apologize. We, and you, know who you are. Consider these 10 grievances. If you're familiar with American history, you might appreciate the reference. Number—excuse me—grievance number one. I have seen a few of the members of this council call some of our most prominent citizens derogatory names or have made derogatory references about them. Some of the current council members, along with some of the past, tried to subvert the constitutional rights of the citizens to circulate a petition. Three. I have seen several on our current council make impulsive decisions, such as the designation of the city as a port city and the initial refusal of the gas tax, both of which involved bad financial decisions. We have seen one of the current council members distastefully chastise a fellow member in front of the audience. I have seen—excuse me—I have seen some members from this council join with some members of the last to change rules at the last minute in order to get the results they wanted. We have not heard our council speak often enough of the wishes of their respective constituents. I have seen the results of the secrecy in which some of the present council work to the chagrin of the residents and their fellow council members. Eight. Most distressingly, I have seen the repugnant hit pieces disguised as campaign flyers that have been circulated on behalf of several on this council. I have witnessed some council members, on too many occasions, have to recuse themselves because of business conflicts. Finally, we have watched with frustration at both the members of the Planning Commission and the council make promises about an updated city plan that they had no intention of keeping. My fellow citizens of Newport Beach, it is time that we had a city council of which we can be proud.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Carol Anne Drew. I've lived in Newport Beach for 40-some-odd years, and I've written this down and used the thesaurus, just so you know, because I was swearing when I read an article in one of the little throwaway papers in Stu News. So I'm here to speak out against a completely unacceptable nasty letter to the editor written by Bob McCaffrey. The man who is a major force behind the Team Newport machine—that's what made me sad—in which he calls the city council candidate Joy Brenner and Lynn Swine and Susan Skinner dogs. That didn't make me real proud of that man and the fact that he would write a letter to the editor and say that. These people have been working in our community for nothing except their pride and the place that they live, and he calls them a drooling dog. Mr. McCaffrey proudly brags about his control of the city council. This is the part that really ticked me off, and I'm trying not to swear. And it seems that we're seeing a preview of Scott Piattar and Mayor Duffield's campaign strategy, which is, in the absence of accomplishments, just call people names. I hope this is not true. I mean, honest to God, I hope this isn't true. Joy, Lynn, and Susan have been working in our community for better than decades. Ooh, that must mean they're getting old. Much of this time, Councilman Mr. Piattar was an Irvine Planning Commissioner approving the condominium canyon that—you may have read an article that I wrote where there's little sunshine coming from Costco to Newport Beach, traveling down Jamboree, creating traffic and congestion that just dumps in Newport Beach. McCaffrey's comments insult all women and deserve to be fully repudiated. When one looks at McCaffrey's website for phony residents for reform, y'all's pictures are on it. What's your response going to be? At the West Newport Beach Association meeting, council members Dixon and Muldoon had the decency to repudiate Mr. McCaffrey. Mr. Duffy, that they're in silence. And Piattar, you actually defended the man. Now, and—this is America. You can say anything you want. But to call women that have been donating their time and fighting their community drooling dogs is just bad. Sorry. My husband gives up his next three minutes, so I get to talk. Mr. Piattar—
That's actually not—
It doesn't work?
Sorry.
Okay. Well, I'll put this on the Internet, and then y'all can read the rest of it, because I'm not real proud of any of you right now.
Thank you.
Of some of them. Hopefully, you can work a little bit harder and make me prouder.
Good evening. My name is Susan Skinner, and I'm here to address the almost ridiculous effort to hide Mr. Piattar's possible employment by Mr. Duffield. Mr. Duffield refuses to answer direct questions regarding this, and Mr. Piattar calls it a rumor. Your strategy appears to be that if you don't admit it, nobody can actually prove it, but the fact that nobody actually denies it says all that we really need to know. This is a very legitimate and ethical—legal and ethical question. Voters have the right to know if Mr. Piattar's vote can be influenced by a threat to fire him by Mr. Duffield. On a more practical level, anything that Mr. Duffield cannot vote on due to a conflict of interest would then seem to limit Mr. Piattar's votes as well. Deliberately ignoring this apparent conflict of interest is just another example of flouting the laws that were put into place to protect the public interest. Our city attorney, Aaron Harp, should be the one to safeguard the integrity of this process, but he refuses to take any action. In response to my email asking him to investigate, he wrote, quote, "While I understand that you would like answers from our office, it is not possible, given the ethical rules related to the performance of our duties," unquote. I understood that to mean that the security of his job was more important to him than the enforcement of laws. I subsequently filed a complaint with the FPPC in the hope that some oversight agency would take their responsibility seriously enough to investigate this very serious and significant allegation. I would personally appreciate having councilmen that followed the law instead of trying to skate around it. I would like to have councilmen who appreciate our dedicated staff instead of denigrating them and forcing them to retire early. I want councilmen who put city above self instead of the other way around. Democracy works best when democratic processes are respected, and it appears that once again, neither Mr. Duffield nor Mr. Piattar are respecting the democratic norms that ensure that the best interests of the residents are being served by their actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Hello. So, good evening. I'm up here tonight because I respectfully begging all the residents of Newport Beach to start thinking about who they're going to vote for. I feel there's rivers of dark, corrupt, dirty money running through Orange County. I feel that anybody that's endorsed by Dave Ellis or Scott Baugh is all-in on the sober living, all-in on the Chinese developer money. I feel that—I feel there's people on this dais involved with this money, and I think people ought to think about who they're voting for. Don't just check that Republican box. Four years ago, I campaigned for Keith Curry. I thought he would have been a great assemblyman. I think he's an honorable Republican. I think he would have been fabulous up in Sacramento. I think Matthew Harper has done nothing, is not a viable candidate to be up there for our Orange County. We need somebody. I am personally voting for Cotty Petrie-Norris. I think she will get up there. She has the tools. She has the mindset. She has the skills. She is a Yale graduate. She's an entrepreneur. She has a fabulous family, and she knows how to talk to people and get things done. And right now, I want people to think about, don't check because of gender, because of party. Check person, policy, and their plan to get something done for Orange County. She has so many ideas of how to get our tax dollars, which we—we're a donor county. We give all this money to Sacramento, and how much of it do we get back? I can tell you, zip. She will get up there, and she will get something done, and she will respond to her constituents. I got into all this because of sober living and the insanity going on with that in our county. I personally wrote letters, emailed Matthew Harper, a Republican person from Costa Mesa, emailed the Planning Commissioner of Costa Mesa. Could not get a response—Stefan Andranian—could not get a response from Matthew Harper's office about this issue. And now suddenly, you're going to have a town hall here in a couple of weeks. Suddenly, this is a hot topic for this election year, and I'm here to tell you, these people, some of them have been all-in on this money the whole way down the line for the last 10 years that I personally know of. And I know some of you are clean as a whistle up here, and some of you are dirty with this money. And I'm begging you to think about who you want to send to Sacramento. We've got a lot of sailors. We've got a lot of boat people out here. Who do you want in your lifeboat? I want Harley Ruda and Cotty Petrie-Norris in my lifeboat. And there's some of you up here. Tim Stokes, get in my lifeboat. I don't—Joy Brenner, get in the lifeboat. It has nothing to do with party. Think about what is going on in our county, and then please vote accordingly. Thank you. Go, Cotty. Go, Harley.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other speakers? All right. Seeing none, now open up oral reports on committee activities. Anyone up here have a committee report? Mr. Hurdman?
Thank you. Yeah, I have, since our last meeting, which has been quite a while, attended my first Corona Del Mar Residents' Association meeting. That's also on the same morning where I represent the council on the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee, but I've worked things out to where I can go to both meetings now on the Thursday mornings that they're held. We continue to meet—the Water Quality, Tidelines Committee continues to meet, continues to do some outstanding work under Councilman Avery's leadership. And let's see, what else? Outstanding Echo Insert Expo that was held here last Saturday. And the only other thing I guess I want to tell you is that Councilman Muldoon, Councilwoman Dixon, and myself continue to work on the airport issue. We're meeting almost daily now, and we're reaching a delta in this process. So even though we haven't had an airport forum, we haven't had an aviation committee meeting in a while, I just want the community to know, and I want you people to know, that we continue to work very hard on the John Wayne Airport issue. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll go into our first public hearing item, number 11, Community Development Block Grant Program. Does staff have a report? Did you guys like the report? We don't need a report. All right. Mrs. Dixon?
Mr. Juerges. I'm looking at the report. I'm looking on page—it's nine. I guess it's 11-dash-nine. And so down on the chart, figure one, the use of the Community Development Block Grant funds. Well, I'm just jumping right into it, because I think these funds are important, and they do—we've been using these as a city, as all cities do, to invest in projects that have been identified to qualify for these federal funds. And so Fair Housing Services, Public Services. I really wanted to focus on item number three, homelessness prevention services. This is what we're looking at as an annual report, so this reflects work that has been done. So the purpose of my comments is really prospective, and as we enter the new year, and Mr. Juerges, you and the city manager oversee how these funds are dispersed, and I just would like to suggest that we look a little bit more fully and deeply, broader and wider about how we can utilize these funds for homelessness issues. We—I personally have not heard a report. I think these are fine organizations. I'm certainly not being critical of Families Forward and Stand Up For Kids, that they've done a fine job, but for—we are allocating a lot of significant dollars here, in this case, $18,000 for homelessness. I would like us, the next time we look at this report, to know that we—they're just such a creative, important need to look broad and deep in our county as to how we can really make a difference within our city and in our county. So that's really my message tonight, is let's go a little bit deeper in how we can address this important issue in our community as well as our county. Okay? Thank you very much. And thank you for the good work that is done. Again, I'm not reflecting any poor work. I'm talking prospectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman?
Just a quick question. Is CDBG grants—isn't there a ceiling or a limit on how much can be allocated to the applicants? I don't know why, but it seems like I remember the figure of 15% of the total dollars.
Correct. Councilmember Hurdman, it is 15% of the total dollars that we do—
Correct, Councilmember Hurdman, it is 15% of the total dollars that we do receive.
Thank you. So, are we doing that with Families Forward? Is that 18,000 represent, or 14,000, excuse me, represent 15%, the 15% allocation? If you don't know that right off the top of your head, forget the question, okay?
Yeah, Councilmember Hurdman, it is, items two and three combined are the 15%, which is the Age Well Senior Services along with our Families Forward program.
Okay, so even though, I fully agree with Councilwoman Dixon, we're giving the max we can give, correct?
That is correct. It is the maximum.
All right, thank you.
All right. Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Yeah, real quick, I, for some reason, I'm seeming to recall in the last few, three or four meetings, we approved next year's CDBG plan, right? And to Councilwoman Dixon's point, I think we've actually added money into homelessness and added another agency, another company. Is that, is that what you were referencing?
Yeah. Related to...
Asking, it's okay, I'm asking Councilwoman Dixon, is, do you mind, Mr. Mayor, if Councilwoman Dixon answers my question on that one? Okay, all right.
You are correct, Mayor Protem, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, all right, I just needed to clarify, I just couldn't remember. Thank you.
All right. Seeing those other speakers up here, take it to the public. Are there any speakers out there who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none? Oh, Jim, sorry.
Mayor Duffield, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and on this item, although you might not need a staff report, actually, it's desirable for you to have public comments. If you read this and you look on, in the back here someplace, there's an appendix, Appendix B on Staff Report, page 1143, that is the summary of the citizen participation comments that you received, and if you look at the page, it's currently blank, and it says, "Pending comments to be provided at the city council meeting." So, I know from the lobby, you got one written comment that's out there, and so that your report looks a little better, I was going to offer you a few more comments to fill out the page. And I didn't read too far into the report, I did get as far as the high-level summary, which is table one, it's on Staff Report, page 11-8, giving the accomplishments for the program, both for the program year and for the strategic plan. I wanted to point out to whoever wrote this and whoever is going to be receiving it, this table is a little bit hard to understand. The very first line about housing services, the indicator, it says for the first one, Fair Housing Services, the indicator, it says other, the unit of measure, it says is other. And during the program year, we've served 102 of the other. I think the unit of measure is actually people, it says that on the next page, so I think it's 102 people we serve. I found that confusing. I found the other, other, a little further down, a little hard to read. But the real comment I wanted to make is the great lion's share of the money that we spent, $1,435,000, went towards infrastructure improvements. I think this is where we put in ADA ramps for the benefit of the homeless. And it says persons assisted, and it says the number we expected to assist with our new ramps, 8,595, and the actual number assisted is zero. So we accomplished nothing with our investment of $1,435,000. That seems a little bit strange way to report things. And then a few pages later, I noticed that there's a, don't mind my rambling, I have a page here I have to fill with comments for them. There's a section about affordable housing. I would point out that we certainly do have an affordable housing crisis in Orange County, but in Newport Beach, we always hear about the importance of increasing our property values, and the more our property values go up, the least, less, less affordable housing in Newport Beach becomes. Then we have the page about the homeless, which is on Staff Report 11-19. I was surprised to hear we're in year six of a 12-year program to end homelessness in Newport Beach. I'm not sure if in the remaining six years, we're going to accomplish that, but what surprised me was the third paragraph down, our homeless program in Newport Beach, it says is coming out of the Planning Division, and I thought it was the Police Department that was doing that, and I'm wondering if any of this money could be used to help that program, which doesn't even seem to be mentioned here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back. Mr. O'Neill.
Sure. There, actually, to Jim's point, he went down to 11-8, but 11-7, I just want to highlight just a handful of the things in the last calendar year that Newport Beach has done with the federal CDBG funding, and I'm going to quote it, it says, "Together with other federal, state, and local investments, federal resources allow the city and its partners to provide fair housing services to 102 residents, provide homelessness prevention and assistance services to 177 residents, provide public services such as addressing elder abuse and neglect for 36 residents, provide public services such as home-delivered meals to 94 senior residents, and we've provided funds for the Section 108 loan repayment, which you'll see in there." And then every year when we talk about CDBG funding, I always like to highlight a program that we used CDBG funding to, to help fund, and we continue to fund, which is a partnership with Habitat for Humanity. It goes by the term SHARP. It's an acronym for Senior Housing Assistance Repair Program. If you know of any seniors in the community who are living in substandard living conditions for whatever reason, encourage them to visit the Oasis Senior Center and ask about the SHARP program. We've been able to help a number of seniors with what are sometimes lifesaving improvements just inside their own home, where we partner with Habitat for Humanity as a city to make sure that we raise up the level, the standard level of care for, for our seniors, especially our seniors on fixed income. So I always like to highlight SHARP, please by all means, encourage your neighbors or friends, if you know of any, to, to use that as a resource. I was going to move staff recommendation, but I see a couple of people talking, wanting to talk, so I'll, I'll wait.
Mr. Councilman Muldoon.
Thank you, Mayor. The program that Mr. O'Neill just mentioned is one that's very near to my heart. I think it's one of the better programs that we use these funds for. It allows people to stay in a, in a place of dignity in their personal home for a longer duration and have a higher quality of life, and enjoy the security that cannot be replaced by another address. I do want to follow up on some of the questions that Mr. Mosher had about that line item on 11-8 staff. Specifically, the, the large dollar amount where it says expected, and it looks like actual zero, could you please explain to us what that means and why that number is?
Thank you, Councilmember Muldoon. I'm going to turn it over to Lauren Wooding Whitlinger, who's the program manager.
Good evening, Mr. Muldoon. Yes, the funds were expended, but the contract, the construction contract is still outstanding. There's some retainage that needs to be paid, so the report next year will show the full 100% will have been paid. It just doesn't show it on this report because we haven't, haven't closed out that contract yet.
So would you explain essentially what that program looks like from a construction and payment and timeline standpoint?
We have drawn all the funds from CDBG and will be paying out the, the rest of the contract probably this month. That's with Public Works, they went out and improved ADA curb ramps around town.
So that's, that's mostly exterior, then?
It is, it's all public right-of-way.
So, just so we're clear, the zero actual, if it's happened, but it hadn't been paid, I guess I'm confused.
HUD does not allow us to report accomplishments for an activity until the activity is fully drawn and closed out in their database, so the fact that we are not showing accomplishments is really a technical issue with the report, more so than the construction is complete.
So for the sake of individuals who have concerns about this issue, technically speaking, there's nothing actually completed, but in real life, there's completion. That's government for you. And is that real-life number reflective of the expected number?
That's correct. The indicator that the federal government prescribes for us to use here is census data for the number of disabled adults in the city. And so that's the 8,595 number.
That makes sense. It's a very specific number, but it's not based on, we're not counting trips. That's based on, okay, census, perfect. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just wanted to clarify, I'm looking at the same chart, page three of that report, 11-9, the public facilities infrastructure ADA improvements. My understanding was that those ADA improvements were the curb, the curb access for handicapped people. I think Mr. Mosher said homeless, but I believe it's handicapped, isn't it? And that we have, I don't know if Public Works is still here, but we've, we've upgraded hundreds of curb cuts to enable handicap, handicapped access across the city. Is that my understanding correct?
It is the disabled curb ramps, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other speakers up here.
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
All right, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, we'll move on to item 12, which is the accessory dwelling unit ordinance update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Simone Juerges, I'm the Community Development Director. With me, I have senior planner Jaime Morello, who will be presenting the item with regards to the accessory dwelling units. We have about nine slides, it won't take very long to get through that presentation. Jaime.
Thank you, Simone. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'll be presenting just a brief update to the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance. The council may recall that last year, we adopted kind of a major update to the city's ordinance related to accessory dwelling units. However, before I get into the proposed amendments, I think it's important to provide a little bit of background as to what an accessory dwelling unit is, and a summary of our current ordinance. But for short, we call accessory dwelling units ADUs, and they are essentially secondary dwelling units with independent living facilities. So they're separate legal units, however, they tend to be smaller. In our ordinance and through state law, there's really two types of ADUs, and the regulations that apply to each of these are slightly different. So there's new construction ADUs, which can be either attached to the principal dwelling or detached, such as like in the photo on the bottom right of the slide. However, there's also conversions. So ADU conversions are really units that were repurposed from existing space within an existing single-family dwelling or an accessory structure without a single-family property. So it could be like a pool house that's converted to an accessory dwelling unit, or just a large bonus room. Just to provide a little bit of background with the law, so the state legislature back in 1982 created the ADU law to encourage the creation of accessory dwelling units. This is kind of seen as an alternative to state subsidized affordable housing. This is an opportunity for private homeowners to construct accessory dwelling units and allow the private market to address the housing shortage in the state. But until recently, the state allowed the city a lot of flexibility. So the city in 1988 adopted an ordinance that prohibited accessory dwelling units based on a finding of adverse impact, with exception of granny units. And these are units that were restricted to persons of the age 55 or older. But in 2016, the state made a major change to the regulations related to accessory dwelling units and eliminated the city's ability to prohibit accessory dwelling units and establish their own state standards that would remain in effect. And any existing city ordinances that were in effect were avoided until new ordinances were adopted compliant with state law. Just to provide a, just a quick overview of the current ordinance, which was adopted last year, this is a slide that summarizes the standards that apply to ADU conversions. So again, these are ADUs that are repurposed from existing space. State law did not allow, or does not allow, the city to modify any of the standards. So in ADU, the city must permit an ADU within any existing single-family dwelling or an accessory structure on a single-family zone lot. The city cannot regulate the size of the accessory dwelling unit or require an additional parking. Also, no additional fees, utility connections can be required. And as far as setbacks, we can only make sure that the side and rear setbacks are sufficient for fire safety, but we can't require any, like additional setbacks. For new construction, state standards did allow for the city to modify some standards related to location, lot size, parking, and aesthetics, provided that our modifications to the state standards are not arbitrary or unreasonably restrict the, the development of accessory dwelling unit. So our current ordinance only allows new accessory dwelling units within single-family zone districts and on a property with a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. We also modified the unit size from the state standard of 1,200 square feet down to 750 square feet, which is large enough to accommodate one-bedroom unit. We also established standards related to aesthetics that require the ADU to have an architecture that's similar to the principal dwelling in terms of architecture, style, roof pitch, colors, materials, and again, that's to maintain the community character and minimize the appearance of multiple dwellings on a property. We also restrict the height of an accessory dwelling unit to, a detached accessory dwelling unit to one-story, 14 feet, unless it's located above a garage, in which case it'd be subject to standard zoning. And the parking in our current ordinance requires one space per bedroom, up to two spaces max. The additional spaces do not have to be in a garage, they can be uncovered tandem or through mechanical lifts. And there's also an exception that no parking's required if located within a half-mile of a major transit stop or within a vehicle car-share program. But the amendments that are before you tonight are fairly minor. It would affect both Title 20, the zoning code, which is, affects properties citywide, as well as our local coastal program, which is contained in Title 21, and that affects only properties in the coastal zone. But the amendments are proposed in response to two bills that were adopted last year and became effective in January of this year. So the two amendments that are needed to our current ordinance are as follows. So for ADU conversions, state law now states that we have to allow ADUs within an existing single-family dwelling on single-family zone lots, but also multifamily zoning districts. So for example, on our two lot, let's say on the peninsula, if a property is developed with a single-family home, and they want to convert a large bonus room, we would now have to allow for that conversion and permit that accessory dwelling unit. As it relates to new construction ADUs, the only change required by state law is that the parking requirements have been reduced to a maximum of one space regardless of the bedroom count. And then the prior exceptions would still apply. In addition to those two amendments, staff is recommending an additional revision for new construction, and this is to allow, in conjunction with, single-family dwellings on single-family and multifamily zoning districts, also to permit new construction ADUs. And the main purpose is to just make sure our regulations are consistent related to conversions and new construction, that'll make our ordinance easier to implement and for the public to understand. And the lot size limitations would still apply, so this would still require an R2 or MFR multifamily lot to maintain a minimum 5,000 square feet for new construction. And that would really prohibit these ADUs in areas where of substandard lots, such as in Corona Mar or the peninsula, where there's less privacy and less available on-street parking. So as you can see, only about 14% of our multifamily lots would be eligible. Also, the ordinance would still only allow an ADU in conjunction with a single-family dwelling, so an existing R2 lot, which has a duplex, would not be eligible for an ADU. So overall, the density would remain unaffected. The limitation on unit size for 750 square feet would still apply, and therefore, the one-parking space requirement would remain appropriate. Also, because our ordinance requires owner occupation of either the ADU or the principal dwelling, allowing ADUs within a multifamily property would ensure that the property remains as a rental opportunity for the city and promotes owner occupancy of these properties. And lastly, our ordinance restricts short-term rentals of ADUs, and therefore, a lot of the problems associated with short-term rentals could be avoided. Do you want to point out that the Plan Commission reviewed these proposed amendments after August 9th, Plan Commission... August 9th, Plan Commission meeting, and unanimously recommended City Council approval? And so for tonight, there's an ordinance and a resolution before the council. The ordinance is related to the zoning code amendment, and staff is recommending that the City Council introduce the ordinance and pass the second reading at the next City Council meeting. Upon adoption of the ordinance, staff then has to submit the ordinance to HCD for their review and comment, which is a new requirement under state law. However, do you want to point out that staff has consulted with HCD, and we don't believe there'll be any comments regarding our ordinance? And the resolution that's before you is to authorize staff to submit the changes related to our local coastal program to the California Coastal Commission. Do you want to point out that there we have an existing LCP amendment to adopt the previous 2017 ordinance, which is still under review by the California Coastal Commission, and this will be a subsequent amendment to those revisions? And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Great report. Thank you. It's not easy. I see we have, Mr. Pieter would like to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify some things on the staff report. Jaime, do you have a copy of the map that was in the staff report showing the new lots that are going to be affected by this?
You know, I apologize, I did not load that exhibit.
Okay. The, you talk about 14% of the lots are affected by this. Explain how you came up with the 14% number. I know most of the lots in Coronel Mar and the peninsula that are R2 are much less than 5,000 square feet. So those lots are not going to be part of the numbers. Is the 14% just those lots that are over 15% or over 5,000 square feet?
That's correct. The, map here. So of our conventional zoning districts, we have, for R2 zones and multifamily zone properties that this ordinance would be applicable to, there's 4,459 lots, but only 640 of those are more than 4,000 or 5,000 square feet.
So 14% of the R2s and multifamily lots, multi-unit lots are Rcs, are the ones that are affected. And one of the concerns I had was, and I think you did a good job in the staff report explaining it, but I just want to make it obvious to the public, the, it only affects an R2 lot that has a single dwelling unit on it. So you're not going to have an R2 lot with two units on it, and then each of those two units get to have an ADU, and you end up with a four-unit lot. I just want to make it clear that what we're talking about is if you've got a 5,000-foot lot in an R2 and you want to add an ADU, those are the only lots that are going to be affected by this, and they would have to comply with the same rules, basically, that any other R1 lot would have to comply with.
Correct.
All right, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no one else up here, I'll take, I'd like to open the public hearing. Are there any folks that would like to come up and speak on this issue?
Mayor Duffield, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. This item doesn't really need public comment, but I have a comment anyway. As we've heard, the old ordinance applied to single-family homes in R1 zones. It's being extended now to R2 and multifamily districts by means of showing those permitted in certain charts. However, the language about the purpose of this has not been changed. This is technically tonight, the introduction of the ordinance, not the passage of the ordinance. And I believe the idea of a first reading is to check what you're reading and see that it makes sense, so that when you adopt it at the second reading, you have the proper language. If we're really changing the scope of this, then I would think we maybe should be making a change to Section 2048-200A, which is on staff report page 12-9, among many other places, because there's multiple copies of this, where at the top of that page, there's, it now shows accessory units permitted in a whole bunch of different zones, but the purpose language hasn't really changed from what it was before. And it says, "The purpose is to allow the units in single-unit residential zoning districts or areas designated for single-unit residential use, including as part of a planned community development plan or a specific plan." Throughout the staff report, it says it's in areas allowing a single-unit residential use. And in the three minutes I'm allowed, I can't make the comment very clearly, but perhaps if what we mean as allowing single-unit use, it should say allowing single-unit use rather than designated for single-unit use, because it's a little hard to see an R2 in an RM zone as one designated for a single-unit residential use. So I would suggest, instead of designated for, it should say allowing. And then following up on Councilmember Pieter's comment, I do understand in the R2, it's only where you have a single, single-family home on that lot. But I'm wondering, there are RM districts where a large lot is allowed to have multiple detached, single-family homes on it? And where is it specified? I would like to know in the language, the new language here, that you cannot have an accessory dwelling unit in each of those detached, single-family homes throughout a large RM district? Or is that, if that is the intent, where does it say it in here? So that there could be in that big RM thing only a single, single-family home, not a whole bunch of them eligible for this, if that is the intent? I haven't read it carefully enough to find that, and I kind of doubt that it's in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm going to try. I only read the documents twice, and there's still a lot that I must say is not clear and/or that's very inconsistent in these draft ordinances. Just to go back to what the state's intent was with ADUs, they're really trying to facilitate the development or availability of more, quote, "affordable," end of quote, "housing stock" in what they characterize are elements of our changing demographic environment. What we're talking about here, and I realize this is a very complex issue for the city, it's also an issue that carries with it a lot of irrevocability, because we are making some fundamental changes in our land use schemes and in a lot of areas that have been very sacred and distinct and valuable to this community, in particular, single-family residence type of R1 lots or equivalent. This is effectively going to say that we've potentially, if we don't construct this ordinance and administer it properly, we're going to be at the end of R1s. There will be no more R1s. So it's extremely important that the ordinance is clear and that what it says, as Councilman Pieter said, as Mr. Mosher has said, that what it says is truly what the city and the council intends for it to stay, say. There are a number of assumptions in the city's draft ordinance recital that got translated into the proposed ordinance that I had some questions about, and I'm just going to name a few. I know I've only got a couple of minutes. One is parking. So on one hand, we are seeking to, quote-unquote, "accommodate" these uses, but we are talking about in many environments in our city that are extremely constrained from a parking standpoint. So when we talk about exempting these ADUs from or waiving a requirement in favor of a bus stop that is maybe a half a mile away, I really, I really question the integrity of that as a metric for saying, are all these, are none of the contemplative residents or occupants of these ADUs going to have cars? Is that what that suggests, that that's a satisfactory metric? So that's just one representative question. The other is the concept of the minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. And I do agree that having a minimum lot size could be potentially a useful metric. We have a problem of inconsistencies and potential, real challenge to integrate this proposal with what is currently being done in this city. And I'll just give you an example. Let's say you're a lot, I'll give one quick example, and then I'll shut up. 5,000-square-foot lot on the Balboa Peninsula. At this point in time, it's been the city's practice to allow houses that are 4,500 square feet. So what's going to happen? Are people going to cram an ADU in where they've already violated the side setback regulations?
Got it.
And that's what's being allowed. So anyway, lastly, the maps. The maps, to myself and others, appear to be contradictory to what's being said. So I'd appreciate the opportunity also to see the maps and have a walk-through of them, because when I look at them, it's the opposite of what's said. Thank you very much, and thanks to staff.
My name is Ken Rosson, and I'd like a little help. Could you put up the slide that you have for new construction? Now, I just got the notification this morning that you were going to talk about this tonight. Spent two hours going through the agenda that you have with all your attachments. I couldn't get through them all in two hours. And I'm confused. I'm a construction manager with 35 years' experience, and I couldn't follow your attachments. I couldn't follow your examples. You ask about 5,000 square feet. It's only for new construction. It's not for conversions. I understand, at least to my satisfaction, what this ordinance is going to do for new construction. And I think as a resident on the peninsula, I feel protected by the 5,000 square feet. I think. My real concern, scary concern, is what we're doing with this ordinance with conversions. There's no lot minimum. What I understood and what I read this morning in my two hours' research is you could put up a 750-square-foot unit and have zero parking. The way the ordinance is set up, you don't have to provide parking. Now, I've listened to all of you talk at the candidates' meeting for this upcoming election. And every one of you that talked at the candidates' meeting call the peninsula the jewel of Newport. I'll tell you what our problem is on the peninsula. It's parking. And in the summer, we have no parking. Do not damage the jewel by putting an ordinance out that's going to give us zero parking for a new unit. It doesn't work. I'm, I'm, I'm a 30-year resident, built a property down here, followed all the permits, and happy for the building codes we have. And the idea that you're going to do a conversion and let people come in and have no parking in the conditions we have on the peninsula now is just, to me, it makes zero sense. And I'm not sure all the council people understand exactly what the conversion standard is. And so what I'd like to ask the city to do and the staff to do is can't you put a simplified report out on the city webpage that explains this in much more direct terms than going to five, six, seven, eight different attachments that are spread all over? Make it more concise. I challenge you. I went and talked to my residents on my block, and nobody understands this. The only other person I met that understands this is who just got up and spoke, Denise. So you're not reaching the people, and my friends that I've talked to are not in support of the conversion ordinance at all. So please consider helping us and do something that, on the city webpage, that would better explain. We talk about you want to have transparency
Right.
with your property owners. Please get this transparent to us. It's not right now.
You've made yourself very clear. Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Carmen Rosen. I just wanted to ask regarding the restriction of no short-term rentals. Well, right now, you cannot monitor the illegal short-term rentals that we have in the peninsula. Now, this is going to be, it's going to compound even the problem more. Right now, you have Airbnbs everywhere. How are you going to control it and make sure that it's not a short-term rental? Also, when there was talk about owner occupant, how can you control that also? So that's all what I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Mr. O'Neill.
I'd like to run through a few, a few of the concerns here. So we dealt with this issue about a year ago because of state law that came down requiring us to amend our, our code. And we did, just, and every surrounding city did the same thing, right?
That's correct, Councilmember O'Neill.
And then the state of California amended, passed a new law, and that's what we're addressing right now, correct?
That's correct. We are implementing what state law requires us to do.
Okay. So the, I'm going to just point out that the frustration you feel is the same frustration that we feel every time we find out that California is passing a new housing law that applies equally to Newport Beach, Bakersfield, San Diego, the inland empire. I mean, it, it's crazy to put housing laws that impose restrictions and provide these kinds of new code changes into municipalities that understand the history of their own municipalities and character of their internal villages so much better than anyone else up in Sacramento could possibly understand when they're trying to pass an ordinance like the, or pass a law that then requires us to do these ordinances. So let me ask a few questions. So one of them is parking. Do these laws specifically address parking in a way that restricts us from requiring parking spaces?
Yes, it does. The new law requires that we only can require one parking space, and it could be in the, for, for us, it's for new construction. With regards to conversions, we cannot require any parking spaces for conversions.
And that's specific to state law?
That's specific to state law, and unfortunately, we would not add that if we weren't forced to do it by the state.
Okay. And then in terms of square footage, I recall that that was a little bit ambiguous a year ago. We were able to try to find, with the 5,000-square-foot figure seemed to be something that Newport had used, but it sounds like when we're talking conversions, that's, that's just simply not the case, and we don't have anywhere near the same amount of gray area when it comes to trying to find a proper square footage.
That's correct. For conversions, there's no square footage.
Okay. So I'll just say, I share this frustration. I really do. I, I think that a year ago, we shared the same frustration. We're sharing it again. And maybe this is the best question. Are we, are we doing anything to encourage ADUs above and beyond what statement law mandates in these municipal code changes?
The only thing we're doing different is the state is requiring us to allow the conversions. And what we're proposing is that, okay, if you could do it for a conversion, then a homeowner should be allowed to build it as new. And that's what we're amending on with regards to our changes with the, with the amendment. So if you could do it for conversions, then you could also build it for new, new construction also.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Yeah, obviously, this was the state's response to, Sacramento's response to what is called the housing crisis in the state. It's a way of developing new housing stock with existing, with existing lots.
That, yeah, yes, Councilmember Avery.
And then it has a flexibility where if someone builds a 750-square-foot ADU in their backyard, and they live in a 2,500-square-foot house in front, they could switch around, they could move in the back and rent out the front and have additional income. So it gives people flexibility. They can't move out of it and rent out both lots, both, both dwellings. So there's some safety things in there. Obviously, for some neighborhoods, the parking thing is, is, you know, firewater, basically, given our parking issues. We have no control over that, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think, if anything, I think where we could have done more is to let the residents know how our hands are tied with this by the state. So it's, this is not something that the city has, is voicing on the residents, believe me. None of us would, would do that. So on the other hand, it's, we've, residents have been able to get an ADU permitted for, what, over a year now?
Yeah, just about, you're correct.
And how many permits do we, have we put out?
So what our record shows, that we've only permitted, from a conversion standpoint, one ADU. There's, but there's three additional pending on a conversion. When you look at the new construction, we've only permitted one, and there's three still pending that have not been permitted yet. pending that have not been permitted yet. So in total, we've only permitted two. Oh, three?
Three new.
I'm sorry. Three new. Four total in the last year, sorry. Four total in the last year.
Right. And so what sort of permit process they have to go through?
It's going through the planning process, and they'll go-
If the council's on the requirement?
Right. So what we have applicants do for ADUs is they submit, simply for zoning clearance, because we can't require any discretionary review. So they submit plans to us, and we review the plans for compliance with our ordinance, and we draft a zoning compliance letter to them. We also have a recorded deed restriction on the property that essentially confirms that they're going to be owner-occupied and that no short-term rentals are allowed. And so they'll get recorded on the property, and then they apply for a building permit, and that goes through the plan check process, and a building permit issued.
Right.
And the unit will be inspected.
So if your neighbor was built an ADU and started short-term renting it, you could go to the city's website and confirm whether they had a permit for a short-term rental. Is that correct? Or you could-
Correct, or check with-
Or you could check with staff.
Yes.
The staff is really up to speed. If the permits are easily obtainable online, I mean, you can see it on a, we've got it on a map, right, throughout the city, showing all the short-term rental-
Oh, short-term lodging, yes. Everything's mapped.
Yes. So you could see that if a person across the street all of a sudden is doing a lot of short-term rentals in their ADU, you could find out pretty quick.
Oh, yeah.
And the city would respond pretty quick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, just to follow up on Mr. Avery, so I thought we prohibit short-term rentals in the units.
We do. We don't allow short-term rentals, but if there are any illegal activity, we're monitoring the websites.
It's ripe for it.
That's correct.
Just as someone mentioned. All right, so let me understand what we're considering tonight. If we vote unanimously, I'm just hypothetically here speaking, voted no, what's the consequence of voting no?
Yeah, technically, our ordinance would be in violation of state law, and we would actually have to implement state law standards, which are actually more lenient than the standards before.
So we have some difference?
Correct.
Describe what that is.
So under state law for, related to new construction, so as I mentioned in that slide, where we have a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, there is no minimum lot size under state law for new construction. So we were able to add that 5,000-square-foot limitation, and under state law for new construction, an ADU could be up to 1,200 square feet. We were able to modify that down to 750 square feet. So there's slight tweaks where we were able to do that.
Is there any other area that you considered and chose not to?
No, I mean, with this current ordinance, we're looking at all the residential zoning districts.
So looking on the maps in the peninsula area, for example, are you saying that those lots, I'm looking at, map it is, one of the three, are you saying that the lots on the peninsula are 5,000 square feet?
There's two maps. So one map shows properties that are eligible for conversion, and so that includes all multifamily zone lots on the peninsula. And so that's where you'll see the peninsula is pretty colored.
Yeah, but those multifamily units are occupying the entire square footage mostly, except for a setback of the property, aren't they? Are they saying that this would be, considered this would be then demolished and it's new construction?
Okay, so for conversions, it would have to be repurposed from existing space. So if there's, and then that's kind of the intent of state law is in terms of trying to make it easier. The idea from the state is these are existing structures that already exist, and they're just trying to make it easier to convert an existing space within that structure for an ADU.
As a separate structure or within-
It could, within the structure.
Oh, it could be housed within the four walls of the existing structure.
Right.
And it's considered an ADU.
Right, so if someone had two master bedrooms, let's say, and they wanted to convert one to a little apartment or studio, that's what the ordinance would allow for and what state law is encouraging.
All right, so to address the parking issue, which, as we all agree, is nonsensical when there's no parking at all, is there any way to apply for a waiver of that when there is no available parking? There's a shortage of parking? Does state law allow for any kind of waiver or challenge to?
Right, so for state law for the conversions, it's really strict as far as what we can do. We can't require any additional parking. So if someone wants to convert existing space to an ADU, we can't, we have to permit it, and we cannot require them to provide additional parking space. If somebody's building a brand-new ADU where nothing existed before, in that scenario, we can require one parking space, just one.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Pieter.
Most of my questions have been answered. I mean, what we're doing is, whether we like it or not, we have to comply with it, but we're taking advantage in being able to do things like requiring an additional parking spot if it's going to be new construction. We've downsized it from 1,200 square feet to 750 square feet, and we are the ones that are putting in the 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size. And to answer some of the public's questions, the resolution is very clear that there is a minimum of 5,000-square-foot lot, and only one unit can be on it for an ADU. There are no exceptions whether new construction or existing. So as much as I don't like this, as much as I don't like this, you know, I don't like Balbock's planning, I don't like Sacramento planning either, you know, I commend staff for doing what they could do to make it as easy on us as neighbors in our neighborhoods as possible. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other speakers, is there a motion?
I very reluctantly move staff recommendation.
I very reluctantly second it. All right, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2018-14 and ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, adopting zoning code amendment number CA 2018-003 to implement revisions to state law relating to accessory drilling units. Councilmember Avery. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, thank you. Thank you, staff. That's a tough one. All right, we're on to item number 13, which is the approval of the life safety service fee study.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Simone Jurgis, I'm the Community Development Director, along with Dan Matushovitz from the Finance Department, and Teresa Schweitzer from the Finance Department. These are the kind of development services fees for fire prevention. We were in front of the City Council back in July with a study session, kind of explaining what our fee changes are. Since then, we've been working with the Building Industry Association, BIA, and just trying to understand kind of their concerns and what they would like to see with these fees that we propose. They've asked for a six-month implementation, and that's what's reflected in our resolution tonight. The BIA did submit a letter of, you know, general support of the six-month implementation, and that should be in front of you this evening. We're happy to answer questions. We have maybe, we do have a PowerPoint, a mini PowerPoint, if you'd like to see it. We're just here to answer any further questions. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any questions up here. Oh, Mr. Muldoon. Oh, the PowerPoint. Here we go. Getting late.
Well, Simone wasn't kidding when he said a mini PowerPoint. It's literally one slide. Good evening, Mayor Duffield, members of the council. My name is Teresa Schweitzer. I'm the senior accountant with the Finance Department Revenue Division. We are here, like Simone said, for the life safety services, a history of where we have been with the life safety services fees. We took it to Finance Committee on June 14th, received the support of the Finance Committee to bring it before you, the full council. We had two meetings with the Building Industry Association, and we brought it before you to the council study session on July 10th, and we are here if you have any questions.
Could you go back a slide? Totally kidding. Just to be clear, though, this is, some section was taken off from the last presentation to continue to this because the BIA asked.
That is correct.
Okay, and now we're looking at essentially what are less onerous but still increases as far as there's a net increase of revenue to the city?
What we did with the, for the BIA was we did the delayed implementation. So rather than them going into effect 60 days as we are required to do for building fees, they're going into effect six months after adoption.
And Councilmember Muldoon, the fees that we're proposing this evening are the same that were proposed back in July. So they are, they have increased, and in total, we're looking at a $58,000 difference in revenue that are coming into the city.
Very good, thank you.
Mrs. Dixon.
Mr. Jurgis, Jessica, could you just explain, just to remind people who may not have been listening to the fee discussion in June, that what the process you go through to determine and calibrate the cost to the city to perform these services that only apply to the user of those services? And if the fee does not reflect the cost of providing the public or the user of those services, then the general population absorbs that cost, or you could say it in better words than I.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon. You are correct. We go through a study with a consultant where they look at the fees, they look at the cost to the city, they look at the services that we provide, and we calculate the fee based off of our direct costs of our staff time, and we use overhead, indirect, and citywide overhead as well. We charge 100% per the municipal code. We are supposed to charge 100% of the cost of service to fees unless noted otherwise. And the reasoning behind that is to charge the user of the service or the program the full cost so that the general residents aren't bearing the burden of that service.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing no more questions up here, I'd like to open it up to the public. Are there any public comments on this?
Mayor Duffield, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I have two comments. First, as we've heard, but was not totally clear, actually, from the one slide that you saw, you did, I think, see exactly the same fee schedule in July, and at your July 24th meeting, you adopted a resolution, 2018-55 was the number of the resolution, that adopted all the fees except these. These were stripped out of that. And if you recall, in July, the city staff was pushing for automatic CPI adjustments to the fees that were being approved at that time, and the earlier resolution, 2018-55, said those new fees were going to be subject to a rather complicated adjustment schedule, maybe not that complicated, but something you worked out negotiating with the staff on that night in July. I think they would go up automatically for three years, and then after that would need council review if they were going to go up, something like that. That issue is not addressed in the current resolution, so I'm wondering if the current resolution needs to actually state in that whether it's your intention that these new fees, which you stripped out in July, are also subject to the same CPI rules as the ones that you adopted in the earlier resolution. And then the second comment that I made back in July, when you were looking at the same change to our subsidy schedule, which is on staff report page 13-14 and beyond, and anybody looking at this sees no rational reason for these different cost recovery figures that we have, very odd numbers you'll be adopting tonight for certain facilities. We recover 36%. For something else, we recover 40.8%, something else 38.1%, et cetera, et cetera. This seems to be an example where the policy, which is the recovery schedule, is being modified to match our past practice, rather than our past practice being adjusted to match some understandable policy of why we're subsidizing these different amounts. And I think a more thoughtful council would have more even percentages here that made more sense and were being applied across the board, rather than these really strange numbers that are in the table. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other speakers on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring, close the public hearing. Are there any comments up here? All right. Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the fees per staff recommendation.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2018-15 and ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending Exhibit A to Newport Beach Municipal Code, Section 3.36.030, related to cost recovery. With Councilmember Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any, not seeing any motions for reconsideration, I would now go to adjournment, and I would like to have Mr. Muldoon have a moment.
Thank you, Mayor. This is brief before your more, before your planned adjournments. I'd like to adjourn, in addition to what Mayor Duffield will mention, in memory of Maureen Hutchins. Maureen was a native of Los Angeles and moved to Orange County in 1994. She is known for her kindness to everyone, love for her family, and her dedication to her grandchildren. She is survived by her husband, Bob, of 47 years, three living children. Her eldest preceded her death in 2016, 10 grandchildren, and one great-grandchild.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I'd like to take a moment and would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in remembrance of the nearly 3,000 victims of the September 11th, 2001 terrorist attacks, and in honor of the firefighters, police officers, paramedics, and good Samaritans who selfishly rushed into harm's way that day to help those in need. May we and future generations never, ever forget that tragic day and their sacrifices. We are adjourned.